... o'clock hour and I am calling the regular session of the Board of Supervisors into session. And I want to thank everybody here currently that has come to speak, participate for your attendance. And first on the order is a moment of reflection, please. Thank you. And now we'll ask Supervisor Valerie Starkey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can please take role.
Supervisor Starkey.
I'm here.
Supervisor Howard.
Here.
Supervisor Short.
Here.
Supervisor Borges.
Here.
Chair Wilson.
Here. Do we have any new employees to be introduced to the board today?
Yes, Chair and Board, we do. We have some employees from the Health and Human Services Department as well as one from the HR Department.
Good morning, Board. We have a couple of new employees to introduce, so I'm going to ask Behavioral Health Program Manager Megan McClassen to come up with her new employee. And then after that, our new Public Assistance Program Manager Jennifer Orman is going to introduce a new employee.
Good morning, Board. I'd like to introduce Noel Dana. She's a new clinician or therapist in our office. And she's going to be helping us do assessments for our clients to see if they need services and what kind of services. And she will be conducting regular therapy. And she's a little shy, so she just wants to say hi and not much else. So, thank you.
We are so happy that you're here.
Yes, welcome.
Good morning, Board. I'm Jennifer Orman. I'm the new Public Assistance Employment and Training Program Manager. And this is our new Eligibility Specialist, Sierra Pearson. Hello, it's nice to meet you guys. I'm the new Eligibility Specialist One over at DHSS. I'm just going to be working with getting people on welfare, helping them with their eligibility stuff, and introducing them to programs over there. And I just came from Chico, California, originally from Mendo, so I'm excited to get started and be able to help everyone here.
Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Whitney Pinkham from Risk Management in the Administration Department. Here, happy to introduce to you Karen Cook, our new Human Resources Technician in the Human Resources Division. I'm not going to say a lot about Karen because she said she loves public speaking. So I'll go ahead and let her approach and tell you a little bit about herself.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents and the staff of Delnort County. I'm traveling from Curry County every day, but loving the, it's easy drive and it's a beautiful drive, so it's exciting. But I'm just so impressed with the staff and everybody is so polished. I say they're the Nordstrom of counties. It's so refreshing to see such polished and kind people, so I'm really excited to be here. And I have 30 years of experience with HR and bachelor's degree from George Fox University. And so I was substitute teaching, so this is nice. I don't have to put anybody in detention and just welcome them in and get them hired. So that's a nice pleasure. So thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, thanks, Board.
And do we have anything to report? Out Jackie from closed session.
The Board did unanimously support the filing of a new case. Once that case is filed, then it will become public record.
Thank you. Their Chair requests any deletions, corrections, additions to the Board members of the agenda at this time. In order to add any item to the agenda, the matter must come before the attention of the county. Subsequent to the posting of the agenda, the matter requires action before the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. The only thing I have is that we have pulled Item 20. That's Item 20 from the agenda, and that has been removed. Anything else to report? Anything else for the good?
No.
Okay. Okay, so will we receive any other brief reports, announcements relative to the County of Delnort, programs and projects, progress of two by two committees, goals, et cetera, from the Board and staff and training reports? And Valerie, could please kick us off?
Thank you, Chair Wilson. It's, I will talk fast, but there's a lot to sell. After our last meeting, I did attend the first five commission, and we got our annual report for parent information forms and the information for kindergarten readiness. What I found interesting about this is that portions of that readiness report are missing this year due to the Smith River Complex fire and their inability to get that information. So it's just one of those things where we have disasters here locally. It just impacts so many things, our services that we provide and the data that we can collect. So I just found that to be something worthwhile to note. I met with some Board members of the Performing Arts Center to discuss fundraising efforts. As you know, we are attempting, Nick Rail and his wife are attempting to erect a performing arts center here in Delnort County that will really add so much to tourism and to the performing arts for our local individuals. And they are looking for ways to find some fundraising and to reach out to outside of Delnort County and what that might look like with regard to perhaps federal appropriations and other ways to earn some income. I participated in an opioid settlement group discussion. And I also participated in the Juvenile Justice Commission's teen court discussion. So the Commission is currently working closely with the court and the school district to find ways to develop a teen court here within Delnort County. We had one years ago that went away, and so we're having to re-implement it. And the Commission, they identified a dozen or so stakeholders, and they've asked us to help participate in developing a successful teen court model. So I was very fortunate that I was included in that. We're going to be, you know, coming up with things like the age range for teen court, the, you know, the age range of the defendant or the teen that is going to be before them. What type of complaint should initiate a hearing, those sort of things. So in over the next few months, we'll be working on that with the hope that this teen court is up and running by September when school is back in session. I met with the Harbor Master to discuss some issues at the harbor. If you read the papers, you know that there are some current issues going on at the harbor. And I kind of wanted to see for myself and hear directly from the Harbor Master as to if there was some validity to the rumors that I had been hearing. And it is true. There's a lot of truth to the rumors, and, but he has a plan in which he's hoping to help redirect just how dire their lack of resources are. I met with the Rape Crisis Council with regard to ways to reduce intimate partner violence. As I previously stated, I held a luncheon looking for ways in which Delnort County can stop being number one in the amount of calls for service for domestic violence. And that while that was a great overview, it is now important to kind of go in and individually speak to these agencies who are dealing with intimate partner violence on a regular basis and come up with ideas in which we can bring back to the full Board or the full luncheon group about what we could do to implement changes so that we can reduce those calls as well as get the victims the protection they need and the offenders the services that they need. I had a follow-up meeting in ways to keep the Redwood Focused Care. It's a local clinic, how to keep that in business. I'm very grateful for Sutter Coast, for Open Door, for Redwood Focused Care, and for two other physicians in, one in Curry County, one here locally, that are considering taking over that practice so that we can keep those 500 people who have open files, they're their patients at that Redwood Focused Care, to keep them having that local medical care here. I have a follow-up meeting with Dr. Patel on Friday, and I'm hoping that he's going to be giving me good news. So if he's watching, I'm just setting him up that I really want good news, so. I attended the Juvenile Justice Commission meeting. I participated in a volunteer meet and greet for Area One Agency on Aging. We are looking for volunteers, volunteers to drive the elderly, to do errands, to go to the store. While that is a volunteer position, there is reimbursement available per mileage. So it's not, you know, completely just using your own resources, but it is your time, and it's a very valuable thing to participate in. Please contact me if you'd like more information. I attended a Visitor Bureau meeting. I attended the Area One Agency on Aging Board of Directors Meeting and Workshop, and we went over some of the various bills that are potentially going to impact how we provide services to our elderly. I attended the CSAC Legislative Conference, and within that, this is such a wonderful conference to attend. The Legislative Conference is my favorite conference out of the whole year because we're, they're introducing what it is that our legislature is working on currently and how those bills and how the laws that are going to get passed are going to impact us here locally. So, you know, of course, I lean more to the social worker side of things. So I attended the Health and Human Services Policy Committee meeting, and there was just so much in that to cover. But we talked about the Future Ready Aging Network of California. It's called a 2030 Report. I'm going to share that on my social media for you to read. It's only 19 pages, but it really is something that we should be paying attention to because by the time 2030 rolls around, more than half of the citizens in this county are going to be considered senior citizen, or it's not this county, the state. So how do we change and shift our services to really accommodate that aging population? We also talked about the Cal Aim Justice Involved Initiative, which needs to be implemented by March, well, March of 2026. We need to have our plan in. We have to go live by September of 2026. Again, it's a reentry program, so when individuals get into jail, and when you normally go into jail, you get cut off from social or from Medi-Cal services. This is a way for 90 days before you're released, you're going to have that money implemented back, but it also is going to be exit planning and reentry planning for these individuals. I attended the Administration of Justice Policy Committee meeting. And of note and of significance is the discussion regarding the reform of Proposition 47. Now Proposition 47 passed in 2014, and it reduced some things that were once felonies down to misdemeanors. Well, for the last 10 years, I think that the pendulum swung too far to the left or the right, whichever way you want it to be. There was never really a happy medium. So this reform, they needed only 550,000 signatures. They got 900,000 signatures, which says to me that the voters in California want something different to happen with regard to Proposition 47. We got to hear from the District Attorney who brought this forward. He's Sacramento District Attorney, as well as a public defender from, I believe it was Yolo County. There's good pros and cons on each side, but it's, we've got to really pay attention to see if it fits for California. You know, Delnort County typically follows whatever California does, but I think we need to pay attention to make sure we're advocating for how it's going to impact rural communities should this pass on the ballot in November. I also attended a Proposition 1 workshop, Proposition 1 just passed in March, and that is how we're going to reallocate some of the funding that we get. It used to be called the Mental Health Services Act. Now it's going to be changed to the Behavioral Health Services Act. And now the state is telling us how we can allocate that money out. So instead of we just get 100% of the pot and we come up with the different programs that we feel are beneficial for our community, they're saying 30% has to go to high-risk homelessness and housing needs. 30% has to go to full-service partnerships, and 35 has to go to Behavioral Health Services and supports. I did learn in that Proposition 1 workshop that there is some funding flexibility, where 7% can be removed from one category to the next. That is something that is hopeful. There are some small rural community exemptions, so we are going to be paying attention to that as this rolls out in the next few months. I believe it's 2026 we have to have that, that reallocation will, is when that will be impacted us, maybe 2025. I'm looking for, to Rennell. And then finally, I did attend the Quarter Two Middle Mile Advisory Committee. I am on that advisory committee for the state. And there's now interactive maps on the Middle Mile Broadband Initiative website. So you can go, you can click to see Delnort County. We have 82 miles that are currently going to be constructed here in Delnort County. However, they are still looking for applicants perhaps that can do a joint build, which means 25 to 30 of those miles would not be built by Caltrans, but another entity such as the UROC Telecommunications Group. So I will keep the county posted on what it is, who's going to be doing the construction. That must be completed by December of 2026. And, but then we'll have good high-speed internet throughout all of Delnort County. That is my report.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, busy couple weeks. Appreciate Supervisor Starkey covering a lot of the same issues at the Ledge Conference that I wanted to talk about here today. I'll cover some that she didn't. The most important, I felt, the discussion around the reforms to Prop 47 were, resonated quite well with me, and I appreciate your synopsis of that. Just wanted to give the Boards a heads up and encouraging some participation on Monday and Tuesday when President of CSAC, Bruce Gibson, will be here in our community and with the staff of CSAC folks, really trying to highlight during his visit here some of the bigger projects that we're working on. And I appreciate, appreciate anybody's thoughts towards that visit. Also, this weekend Supervisor Gore from Sonoma County will be here this weekend, hoping to engage him, both also along with John Peters. Supervisor Gore will be the NACO President starting in July, and John Peters is the Second Vice President of NACO, as you called during our last discussion. John has been leading a charge that we as a county decided to invest in a significant amount of our ARP dollars here last year specific to forming a 501(c) in Washington, DC that would focus on two specific areas, PILT and SRS. This is going to be a huge piece of the conference in NACO next month, and I'm still hoping to see some of the soups heading down to that meeting here next month. It was good to hear from John Peters, however, that we're about halfway there with the fundraising necessary to start the 501, and they've started floating applications for it and have received over 300 applicants for that position when we're fully funded. So we're in good shape. There's a lot of progress to report on year-to-date from those efforts and hoping to see everybody there. Also wanted to discuss and thank the Japanese delegation who was here last weekend and the Board's participation, all the great work around those workshops, which really focused a lot on our youth and the importance that that story brought attention to here in our community, which was emergency preparedness. Appreciate Supervisor Starkey continuing to participate down there with our youth, and Supervisor Short for all your efforts that helped make emergency preparedness so well-supported here in our community. It can't be overstated, I think, Japan's mission in particular to ensure that no life is lost during natural disaster, but in particular with tsunamis. Wanted to touch base on about three items on the Ledge Conference agenda. One being the Coastal Counties Group. I really appreciate Supervisor Short continuing to take a lot of initiative and attention towards the wind power piece of this conversation, which we all do need to be paying attention to a great deal as a Board. We heard from Janet Gannon, who is the new appointment by the Governor to his office on wind power. She'll be visiting our community soon. Chair Wilson did invite her here, and we hope to see her here in the next two to three weeks to have a discussion with Delnort County. I think these discussions at some point need to be more than just with the Board. They need to be very public and transparent on how this community is going to have this discussion. She's in a tough juggling match, as you're probably aware. Many of our tribes have already taken an early position on this. But as she made in the Coastal Counties meeting, as she made with her opening statements, "We're going to have this one way or another. It just depends on how we want to be on board with it," and if there's any benefits to be had. And so thank you for continuing to pay a lot of diligent attention to this particular issue. Of particular interest to me is the formation of an insurance committee within CSAC to start addressing on a broader scope the insurance crisis that is not only plaguing the state of California, but also the United States in general. There has to be a solution to this. We had a meeting here, not even three months ago, with the Deputy Insurance Commissioner, where she made a statement, which I think she's going to now regret, but she made a statement at that time that she believed the state's larger, largest insurance provider, State Farm, would not be pulling out of this state. I think that was short-sighted on her part, and with the most recent announcement of 70,000 cancellations in the state of California, I think State Farm is signaling that they're not willing to stomach without some kind of restructuring of how this all rolls out, how insurance is provided here in the state. So I'm glad we're going to address this and begin to work with directly CSAC and the Mr. Lara to help find ways to resolve these issues because they are all directly impacting our financial bottom line. Also in Ag and Natural Resources, and I was glad to see our attendance there by Delnort, but we had Lisa Lynn Magar, who was Deputy Secretary to Forest and Wildfire Resilience, in from the Resources Department. We had a great deal of participation from folks here on the Ag side focusing on wildfire. Wildfire has always been an issue here. Obviously, the Smith River Complex was a grim reminder of what can generate from these wildfires, but there's a path forward. There's a way out of this. And I know I've advocated here as a supervisor for many years that we really need to figure out how to address these fuel loads, but more particularly fuel loads on the federal lands. We've done a decent job getting there with the Smith River Collaborative, but there's another step we need to make. And Supervisor Wilson did bring up a lot of these issues, along with Supervisor Short, myself, to try to figure out how to get some of this biomass down to a place where we can begin to utilize it and begin to produce a product here again in Delnort, a product that we can send out of our community and generating economic development. So glad those conversations are taking place. And lastly, I want to reflect on conversations around the CSAC Governance Finance Administrative Committee. There was a lot of discussion around the Assembly Constitutional Amendments, both 1 and 13. These have not been named yet, but there's a lot of scrutiny being paid attention to these. And more importantly, I want to thank Supervisor Short for some of his insights, in particular around ACA 13 and how that would potentially impact Delnort County, especially with just something as simple as ambulance service. Things I didn't realize that Supervisor Short had pointed out that about of the 100% of the calls that they respond to as a fire department, 70% of those calls that they're responding to are essentially for ambulance services. They're not for fires and other type of things that we think around about car accidents, but they're for medical responses. But with this change potentially, those responses, especially by our ambulance service, would be almost entirely eliminated. And that is not okay. That is just not okay. So we need to pay a great deal of attention to this as Delnort County and probably think about having this on our agenda fairly soon to address the complications around both ACA 1 and ACA 13. And that's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Short?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I attended a North Coast DMS Medical Advisory Committee meeting. Thank you for acknowledging. We welcomed the delegation from Rica Zintacada as they arrived at the airport. They had quite a few people from the community there welcoming them. It was a, it was a great welcome as they stepped off the plane. Supervisor Borges and I met with AC Field, the Chief Investigator at the DA's office. He fed us a lot of valuable information there about the goings-on in the office there. Attended a fundraising dinner for the High School Japan Club with the Kamome Foundation and the members of the delegation from Rica Zintacada as well. Met with the Homeless Ad Hoc Housing and Services Subcommittee. We meet every other, every other week, getting ready to prepare the site there at Williams Drive for our new project. Attended CSAC with my colleagues here, where, as was mentioned, we attended a Coastal Counties meeting where we primarily talked about offshore, and I read it the same way Supervisor Howard did, is that we were told pretty clearly, "This is coming whether you like it or not." So it's, we'll have to stay in those conversations and see how we can engage there. I did have a chance, even though that was primarily what was on the agenda for that meeting, I did have a chance to bring up support for three proposed Senate bills that I've mentioned before. They'll streamline our development process by taking the Coastal Committee out of the permitting process under certain conditions. There wasn't a lot of time to talk about that at length, so I'll be meeting with the Board members of the Coastal Counties in the future to discuss that. There were some people there that voiced opposition to my position, but I hope to show that there's quite a bit of common sense in these bills that are, that are coming up and garner support for those bills from the other coastal counties. Like was mentioned, attended the Administrative Justice Policy Committee where we discussed retail theft at length. Also attended the Agricultural- Also attended the Agricultural, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, discussing forest management and county challenges that relates to wildfire, and how our fire safe councils can play a big role in fuels reduction. Also discussed that we might separate agriculture from the environment and natural resources and have a whole other committee, because it seems like there's just way too much to talk about under that one umbrella for the short amount of time that we have there. So, going to be interesting to see how that discussion plays out. And finally, among other things, I attended that Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting, where we talked about autonomous vehicles, which was an interesting discussion, who was for or against, the fears that the public has and the successes that autonomous vehicles have realized, and also some accidents that have happened as well. Also talked a little bit to some barriers to housing development, which was interesting coming from our Coastal Counties meeting, where we were talking about barriers to development there as well. And last evening, I attended a LAFCO meeting where we talked about our yearly budget, and again, talked about Klamath Fire Protection District. It's good to see that they have a full board now, and they are willing to move forward in the best way they can to make Klamath Fire Protection District as best they can. And that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Borges?
Pass.
Pass, okay. I'm going to keep mine as short as possible. I too attended CSAC. My issue was, I didn't bring a shovel, I should have, because I was buried by the time I got through with that, with the snow job that the state was pining to push about the upcoming budget problems. The other thing is, as we look at the Administrative Justice Committee that we attended, we talked about the initiative that's going to be on 47. This is, of course, the reaction that has to come, because when 47 is passed on initiative, they have to pass and make any changes through the initiative process. They cannot just arbitrarily deal with the problems that it created by passing or recodifying the criminal justice code. They have to go through an initiative process. So, what they're basically looking at is reinstating the three-strikes law for petty theft. If you commit three petty thefts, on the third one, it can be charged as a felony. That is something that we already had on our books prior to 47. The other one is that if you are convicted of hard drug narcotics use more on the third offense, it can be charged as a felony, and the impetus to that is that that third felony is to try to force or coerce, I should say, the person in violation into treatment. That is the priority, that is the direction to the court, that they put them into the system of treatment. That was what we had before. That was the system that we utilized in before, the carrot and the stick philosophy of which it didn't work great, but it did help in reduce crime overall. But they're going to re-initiate that process. They're also looking at other changes, reinstating basically the laws that were already to affect. The worry that I have is that, again, if and there is a strong prosecutorial bend on this, those that are incarcerated, the vast majority will come into the Del Norte County jail. And that is going to be a significant financial impact, because we have a lot of people that fall into these categories, that already have two strikes against them under this law, already have committed multiple petty thefts, already have committed the violations of having the addiction and having the two drug offenses already convicted. So, the likelihood that this is going to impact us directly is very likely. And so, because there is very few of the sections that go to state prison, most of them are one, two, or three years in county jails. It says prison, but don't get, it's county jails, is what they're talking about. So, this will have, especially since this is a prime focus for prosecutorial, and there's also a section on those that commit thefts of the kind where they're organized and they are, where you see the groups going into one store and stealing at mass, that will be treated as a different kind of theft and will be charged off as a felony. So, there are changes, significant changes, but because most of these are nonviolent felonies, they're going to end up impacting counties directly. So, it is, that was a big concern. The other one is, every single county, coastal county, every single county, fire insurance was a major concern, because both of the direct and of the indirect effects that this is having, the costs are escalating so rapidly that a developer for a multi-housing unit who had a $41,000 assessment against his for fire insurance when he started the construction, and then was advised that was going to $400,000, and he stopped the production, he stopped the development, because he could not afford, it no longer became viable. So, this is the effects, both direct and indirect, that this loss of fire insurance or the cost associated with fire insurance and the impacts that it's having on business. Because business does not absorb those kinds of impacts without passing it on down, and at some point, it becomes untenable for the business and for the consumer. Anyway, so we shall move to our timed item, that is 10:25, and we ask for anyone that has, any members of the public that may address the board on matters that are not within the, that are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may please, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes out that matter, and please limit your contest to three minutes. And so, any public that has any comments that they wish to make at this time of items not on the agenda, just your general public statement, please come forward at this time.
Greetings, supervisors. My name is Margaret Lewis. This is Andrew Buschamp, and I'm chair, and Andrew is a member-in-long-standing of the Humboldt County In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Board. We are also members of the California In-Home Supportive Services Consumer Alliance, or CICA. CICA is composed of members of advisory boards from counties across the state and holds semi-monthly virtual meetings to inform and train members on various ways to engage with recipients and providers, and to keep abreast of the legislative actions that affect the IHSS program. We are here today as part of our advisory board's outreach project to support and encourage the development of advisory boards in various counties. Counties are mandated by California State Welfare and Institutions Code 12301, 12301, to form a public authority to carry out the delivery of services of in-home supportive services, or IHSS, and an advisory board to report to the governing board. These reports are designated to inform the governing board of the effectiveness of the IHSS program and to make recommendations for improving the delivery of services. Advisory boards also outreach into communities to inform the public of the IHSS program and provide support and networking for care providers and program recipients. One of the most valuable functions of an advisory board is to provide a voice for consumers to express their needs and concerns and play an effective part in their care. We encourage the establishment of an advisory board here in Del Norte County, as per AB 1682. This is done by ordinance of the Board of Supervisors. We also encourage you to visit the CICA website at cicaihss.org to learn what the organization and other counties are doing. The California Association of Public Authorities, CAPA, is also a valuable resource. They meet monthly and are responsible for the distribution of public authority budget, and they also keep abreast of legislative action regarding the IHSS program. The Humboldt County Advisory Board is also here to help. We can be reached at, I have the email address, and I have copies of this for all of you too. It's ihsspublicauthority@humboldt, and my personal email is ml@asis.org, so please feel free to contact us at any time or any of your staff. And we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about this crucial topic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And who do I give these to for distribution?
We did try to reach your public authority before coming to the meeting this morning, but we got no response, so.
Chair, I'd like to take this on. I'd like to look into it if I could.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Move to approve?
Second.
Is there any public comment on items on the consent agenda? Chair recognizes Lonnie Raymond.
Morning. Chief Raymond from the Probation Department. Please don't forget about us. One of the items on the consent agenda is a training burn for the old mental health building, which is an awesome, you know, reading through the item, it's a great opportunity for our fire departments. Looks like there's some mitigation already planned regarding the Ag Department, traffic control coordinated with city police. Don't forget about us. However, that's scheduled, there's a bunch of different ways it can be sliced, and I know it's of great concern, because it's a lot of resources coming together for something like that. That's going to have a direct impact on us, whether that's our juvenile services, our opportunity center, or probably most significant with something like this that would be difficult to move is juvenile detention. So, our holding is still located in that juvenile services building, and so, anything like this is going to impact any juvenile arrests and processing that would occur during that time period. So, please keep us in the loop, and we'll work to figure out how we can make that work. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Lonnie, just to be clear, you just need road access? Just make sure that road stage is there?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, maybe we could put hose ramps if we have to string out.
And don't smoke them out.
Across the road, we can. And what?
And don't smoke them out.
We'll have to talk to God and the wind about that one.
Yeah, I don't know, big fans or something, I'm not sure. Windmills, perhaps.
Windmills, right. Okay, but road access is just, is your primary thing?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we can deal with that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for a vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment about item number 11, and that's the contract for the legacy.
Construction?
Just wanted to give credit where credit was due. The contractor, to my understanding, kind of initiated this process after seeing what the project was and wanted to rebid this to a savings to the county of just over $400,000. So, just wanted to point that out, that we're actually doing something that saves money. So, that is all I had for that item.
On that amazing note, we'll have a vote, please.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Wilson?
Yes. Moving right along. Under General Government, item 18, discuss and provide direction to staff regarding potential design changes to the Requa Road-Hunter Creek Bridge replacement project, including lowering the design elevations of the proposed bridge on Requa Row at Hunter Creek as requested by the county engineer. And I see the county engineer attendance. Board recognizes Johnals.
Thank you, board. Just to give a brief history of this project, it was initiated back in about 2012. It's gone through some, a long, very long planning process, especially around environmental. We're in kind of the right-of-way acquisition process, and it's come up that basically, Caltrans has not raised the grade adjacent to our project. The bridges along Highway 101 also were not raised, and this is all in basically a floodplain. So, if we're to raise the grade of our bridge as is currently designed, we're essentially creating an island that doesn't add or enhance access to anybody at this point. So, the question at hand is whether we ought to proceed with continuing with right-of-way acquisition and the project as currently planned, which includes a grade, a significant grade raise for the bridge, or if we ought to go back and consider lowering the elevations of the bridge. There are some cost savings involved in the actual design or the actual construction of the bridge. We'd be shortening the bridge span from over 200 feet to approximately 100 feet if we're to lower the grade, while still meeting some of the environmental concerns like getting the footings out of the creek, those types of things. Caltrans has said that they will give us basically an allowance to redesign the project, and what they're looking at is the cost savings that we would see in the actual construction. As long as we don't overrun that cost savings and redesign, that we would be eligible for reimbursement. So, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any. Appreciate it. Anybody else? No?
I just, just to make sure, when we're talking about lowering it, it's going back to the current road grid, or is it a magical number we're shooting for?
Basically, we'll talk about the soffit elevation, and so, the soffit is essentially the bottom side of the bridge. So, our target is looking to match the bottom side of the bridge at the current elevation. Depending on the bridge type that you select, since our span, our overall span is increasing because we're looking at removing a footing that would be a two-span bridge, going to a one-span bridge of 150 feet, your deck section increases if you're to do like a steel girder or something, because instead of spanning 75 feet, you're going 150 feet. So, there's three different types of bridges we're basically looking at, like concrete and steel. Those both have for 150 feet, you know, a section that's as tall as me, maybe a little taller, and, or an arch-type bridge, which could be a thinner section, because you're relying on that arch structure to support it. So, we're really looking at that soffit elevation, and then depending on bridge type selection, you'll see that the road height change in some degree. So, okay. But not 10 feet, yeah.
And I just want to just clarify, the reason why we're having to do this is because when Caltrans chose to redo their portion of the road, they didn't elevate it. So, us, by us elevating our section that we want to accomplish, then just creates this island, which is not really solving a problem. Is that?
It's my opinion, you're not enhancing anything at this time. Now, during the design process, we can certainly look at incorporating the ability to raise that bridge sometime in the future, and that would be the ultimate goal. So, if Caltrans does move forward with a grade raise, that we can matchy-matchy. But there are, along the Highway 101 corridor, there are a lot of private accesses off of Highway 101, so, you know, I don't know, not everybody's going to want to get off of a causeway and use a rope ladder to get to their house. It's not practical. So, there's, and there's a lot of expenses associated with that also.
Yeah, thank you for that.
John, what is the lifespan of the projects that were just completed by Caltrans on Highway 101?
I don't know the, I don't know the exact length, but generally, those are 50- to 100-year projects, so I would expect them to fall within that range.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we direct staff to proceed with lowering the design elevations of the bridge to more match what's currently there.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, bring it back for a vote.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Wilson?
Yes. Still ahead of time. Okay. So, we'll move to number 19, approve and adopt the 2425 Del Norte County Board of Supervisors Organizational Strategic Plan as recommended by the Strategic Planning Team. Chair recognizes Randy. Who? Chair recognizes Randy Hooper.
Good morning, Board. Randy Hooper. So I don't have a lot for you today on this item. I think this is the third or fourth time it's been before the board. We've kind of laid out the foundational pieces of the plan and kind of the grand vision. And then we've gotten into the granular elements representing the actions. So I won't belabor any of that because I think, I think we did a pretty good job covering that at the last meeting. I would just point out that we did understand the concerns that were expressed with, with respect to the pace and kind of the scope. So we did kind of do some trimming on the edges. We didn't delete anything substantive. We kind of just incorporated pieces into more singular pieces that can be taken up together. And hopefully that'll help because we did definitely understand and hear those concerns. I also would just take the opportunity to highlight things that have been expressed previously with respect to the plan. Truly not being a static document that sits on a shelf or goes onto a computer server and is totally forgotten and neglected. One of the things that we're really excited about with this platform, the Clear Plans platform, is that it's very interactive and very intuitive. And as of today, it's actually posted through the public portal that we had previously mentioned and available to the public. So I want to highlight that because we think this is a really innovative feature as opposed to kind of traditional planning documents that again end up just gathering dust in those cases. Kind of in anticipation of the board taking action on the, on the, on the next item that was on the agenda, item number 20, I wanted to actually highlight too, that within the portal, you can actually see what we talk about, whatever we say. You can see what the progress actually means. On that specific item, we had drafted a job description pertaining to the position that was to be created for the human resources director. And so if you look on the portal under that specific action item, you can see an incremental amount of progress reflecting that. So it isn't just, you know, here is the action and then a blank page, which every plan kind of starts with at the beginning. When you get into implementing the plan, you'll actually see some of those actions that are, that are going to be taken. So I, I thought that was kind of cool in the context of what we've been talking about here to, to point that out. But again, shouldn't be any surprises with the plan we have for you today. We are very excited to roll up our sleeves and start doing this work, which we think is going to be really important and beneficial moving forward. And I am available for any questions.
Thank you. I just want to say, the ClearGov plan, which is, will be on the public, or is on the public portal now, has a backside and a frontside. And the details that are allowed on that thing basically show the progress and the steps required, who's responsible for those steps, and the progress that is made towards the end goal. This is very much what this whole strategic plan is all about. And that is, the board directs and sets the direction and the course for the departments to take on these particular actions. And the ClearGov will show clearly the progress that is being made in each of these different areas. Much like when you're flying on those airplanes and you bring up the screen and you can see your progress being made going from one point to the other before you meet your destination. And that is what we're doing. We've set the navigation, we've set the course. And the ClearGov will give us and the board the ability to look and see how much progress is being made in each of these individual areas as well as the public. And these are not, some of these destinations are not within a year. They may be two, three, four, or five years out, depending upon what kind of project we're actually talking about or dealing with. But it gives a course and a heading for the board, from the board, to our departments to conduct these things. And so I appreciate the work. Look through the, I looked through the process. I'm very excited about the incremental bites or divisions that you've got set out and look forward to seeing those things get fleshed out as, as you progress. But thank you so much for all the hard work that I know this has taken. It was a very quick pace. But, you know, it's setting some of these goals that are now before you for this calendar year and the budget going before the budget so that you have a better understanding about what and what we want accomplished within this budgetary year and years to come. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
You want me to go first? Okay. Randy, on page 60, it talks about an enterprise resource planning platform. Could you expand on what that is?
Sure. I can, or maybe Neil could. But it's, we've.
Is that, yeah, is that real?
It is not. So it's pretty broad. It covers really basically all of the accounting and budgetary functions of the county in a very different way than how we do it now. We've, if you recall, the board actually approved a contract with Tyler Technologies after RFP was proposed or transmitted. Tyler was the responsive bid that was selected out of, I think, the two or three that we received. But again, it's extremely broad in scope. It kind of captures all the, kind of the backend pieces of what happens in running the organization's finances and fiscal functions, including also expanding into HR functions. And there's a bunch of different modules that could be added. But I think in its simplest form, just think of it as kind of the accounting system that we, we currently use being replaced with kind of the industry modern standard.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
I do have a couple other things, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right. On, on page 34, you have IED-1A that talks about a capital improvement planning process. And you were, whoever wrote in there, that that capital improvement planning group would be kind of like a budget team type of approach. I would like to see that changed to where it would be something closer to a technical, yeah, a tech, technical advisory committee that involves one or two of the supervisors. I don't know what your guys' thoughts on that would be, but we've talked about capital improvement planning for quite a while, waiting for a report about all our structures and what we need to have happen. So I would suggest that that change be made. I don't know if anybody has any, any comments in that regard. And then one last thing, on page 28, item CSC-4B, says something about creating a short-term rental ordinance. I'm actually not quite sure why this is in our goal set. We talked about this subject last year, maybe a little longer. And I thought that the sentiment of the board was that we were not interested in creating one of these. We, we did talk about ensuring that septic systems were adequate and stuff like that, and I believe we ruled on that. But I am, I'm not interested in creating an ordinance. I think the, the surface allegation that, you know, because we have short-term rentals, then, then we don't have any place for people to stay is, is kind of shallow in thinking. I mean, we had a strategic planner make a comment here and said that that's, that's not really the truth. You know, I think we're losing our sights on economic advantages to short-term rentals as well. That's just me. Other people might have different opinions, or other people do have different opinions. But I don't, I don't think that we should have that as one of our goals as of now. And that's, that's the only comments and questions that I had. Mr. Chairman.
So I want to echo what Chair Wilson said, is about the hard work that went into this. I do agree that a lot of staff time and effort has gone into this. And just to kind of piggyback what Supervisor Howard said last time, is it's moving very quickly. And, you know, then to just give a nod to what Supervisor Short said, I don't know that we've had time to really dive into each one of these and how it's going to impact the future of this county. So I'll just go with my comments, and that is on the goal to reduce the vacancy rates. We're going to have a, the action item is to have a comp analysis. But it doesn't really then say, what are we going to do with that composition analysis? Are we going to follow it? Are we going to do the best of our ability? What's our plan once we have that document in front of us? And how are we going to implement that? Because we only have so much money in our coffers. And so if the comp analysis comes back and says that we need to increase, you know, wages by 30, 40%, and we're just not able to do that, I just don't know the whole purpose of having this analysis without the action steps that go beyond that. So that was the first thing that I had. You know, I think job fairs are great. I think that sort of, you know, personnel policy rules, I think those are important to have. So all of that I don't really necessarily have an argument with. It's just, the action step is to get a comp analysis with nothing else. So that's one comment. And the other is to surplus the county land inventory for housing. I believe that we already have done that in our housing element. I would think that those, those identified county properties should have at least made it into the housing element. And that was a huge undertaking for CDD to put together. So that would be my second comment. And then the, just to piggyback a little bit on what Supervisor Short mentioned, with the capital improvement planning team approach, I, I don't mind that. I think that's great. But when we come to capital improvements, it's one of those things where I think the whole board needs to be involved. And I think we need to hear the pros and the cons, the good, the bad, the ugly. Because in, in listening to the constituents, they might want something completely different than new carpet in the flint. I know in talking at the Commomi event, I got to have the opportunity to work alongside Officer Gonzalez from CHP. And, and he really keeps stressing the importance of making sure that we have Pike's Field in a real healthy position. Because that's such a huge park for our kids to go and play in. There's so much memories that are being made there, so many skills that are being taught there. So while I know that's one component of this, it's, it's more about capital improvements as the board hears directly from our constituents about what's important to Delnor County. And so I really want more involvement in identifying that. I do agree with the team approach, but I think that the board should have, be in part of that as well. You mentioned, and one of the goals is a comprehensive capital improvement plan. Now, this is a question that I'm going to have, is, is can you break that down for me? What does that look like? What is a comprehensive capital improvement plan?
Sure.
And then I'll finish up my thoughts.
Sure. So comprehensive CIP now?
If you don't mind, just break it down for me. What's that look like?
Because we got a couple of things to get through based on Supervisor Short's confidence here comments. I can work through all these. I can focus on, on the CIP piece now, whatever the pleasure of the board is.
You want me to just keep going and then you can just answer them all at the end?
Why don't we do that?
Okay, I could do that. The jail rehabilitation project, you know, we've heard about this, we've approved, we've done all these things. For it to be in here, I do appreciate it being in here, but I would have liked to have a status update of where we're at before we saw it in here as part of our overall strategic plan. I feel there's been a lot of progress made that perhaps hasn't come before the board for us to have been able to really know where that's at. Should it actually remain in the strategic plan? You know, if Proposition 47 does pass, Supervisor Wilson is correct, we're going to, we're going to have to expand our jail. So those types of things where, while it's important for us to approve this kind of blueprint and strategic plan, I think we need to have some more information prior to really saying, okay, yeah, just do that. I think we need to have updates regularly on each and every one of these projects. Same goes for the Measure R, public space improvements. We've already approved that. We've already are in the process of that. Where are we at with it? Why has, have those parking lots not been fixed as of yet? So that, you know, again, do I have to know every single detail of every single event? No, but it's still, if we're going to approve this overall strategic plan and there's components in there that we have already previously addressed and looked at, I would have liked an update prior to the strategic plan coming so that we kind of know where we're at with those projects. The county property cleanup, I would like some specific examples of what that is, what that looks like. I would love to see a map of every single piece of property the county owns so that we kind of can actually look at what that means to have this county property cleanup. So Pike's Field, I mentioned that. We have 500K that's coming, 500,000 that's coming from the federal government. But because the, the plan that we submitted was, I think, 3 million, we're not even going to be able to service it. So who gets to decide what we're going to use that 500K for? Is it the whole board? Are we going to do community engagement? How is that going to work? I'm almost done, I promise. And I do, even though I'm, I'm speaking out, I am super appreciative. And I do believe this is a worthwhile thing. The encampment resolution funding, don't we already have that occurring? I'd love an update where we're at on that. I believe that we're already in the midst of that. We're already doing that. Youth prevention and intervention programs, again, we are already in the process of that. Prop 47, or 64 has already been approved by this board. Where are we at in, with that? And core, maintain core services, we do that every year, but I'm, you know, we put it in there. And I'm almost done. The California minimum wage analysis, and that would be addressed in the comp analysis. And then the final thing I want to say about the comp analysis is I would like it to include an organizational structure. I think that's very important for the county to know exactly the structure of our organization. So if we can have an organizational chart brought into that as well. Thank you.
I'll just say, what has been identified within the program, whether it's existing or non-existing, it allow, once the program is activated and, and we start putting more flesh to the bone, that is exactly what it does. It shows you what the progress is. It shows you exactly where we are within jail modification, where we are with Williams Drive, where we are with it. Because those are things that need to be done so that the public has a clear visibility of what we've already set as priority and how we're acting and what we're doing as a government body to fulfill those obligations. Right now, where they don't have that, you don't have it. That's what you're complaining about. And so this is the vehicle that we are building to do just exactly what you are asking for. And so the fact that they're on there is a testament to the fact that that is what we've prioritized and that we've given that direction, that it is a priority. Whether this is something that we did six months ago, or whether it's something we did a year ago. The fact that we are still in the progress of it, in the process of it, no matter what it is, is why we're building this visible operational structure so that those very things that you're, you're asking about and saying, yes, didn't I already do this? Didn't I, yes, we have, but we have not completed them. And we will be able to have through ClearGov a visible representation of the process and the progress that staff, that the board, because some of these things are on our shoulders that we need to do in the process of making these things come forward. Okay? And that's, and that's, it'll, they'll address exactly what you're asking about.
Yeah, no, I, I think everything Chair Wilson said is definitely true. You know, I think the issues that you've identified Supervisor Starkey and Short, out of, I think, the 12 that I took note of, I think really the only one where there appears to be maybe some dissension would be on the short-term vacation rentals. Because as Chair Wilson indicated, all of these other items are items that the board has prioritized and they're in the, in the plan because of that. We've all heard the expression, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. And so if you put it into a plan, you have consistency and have organizational alignment. And again, that's the purpose of having it in the plan is so that you have that transparency and you have that awareness of, of the different actions that are being taken. And I took very good note of the fact that, you know, you want to have more regular updates on all these different pieces. And again, to echo, I think what the chair had indicated is this is the vehicle for you to receive those. So I, I think I can understand where you're coming from before this meeting, having, you know, the desire to have more of those conversations happening. This is a very direct way to, I think, address that issue. I do want to point out that on the capital improvement plan with the technical advisory committee concept, we do have that. We currently have a technical advisory committee that is established specifically for capital improvement. And so in my mind, I think in the minds of the team that put this recommendation forward, is that using the, the model of the budget team, you know, you would, you would still have those conversations. It would just be more clearly articulated and defined how those initiatives are coming forward to you, the board, as the decision makers through that technical advisory committee. So I think, I think we're addressing that with, with this adjustment to the, to the, to the approach. And again, the idea would be really memorializing these changes in policy in the county's administrative manual. So it's well-understood, you know, when a process, when a project comes forward, what the steps are to get it to the technical advisory committee that would then be making a recommendation to the, to the full board. So I think we, I think we're addressing that. The short-term vacation rental, yes, the board has discussed this previously. And I, I think it's a situation because of the public engagement and understanding that there was a real appetite for. that there was a real appetite for there to at least be a conversation around this, that it be included. It isn't to say that the board would ultimately end up adopting an ordinance, or even what the ordinance would look like. But it would be facilitating a conversation, again, at the board level, because of changes in the marketplace with respect to housing, for whether there's any appetite or desire to do something. There may not be, but that's fine. But really, all of these actions are things that would have to come back before the board to weigh in on. If the board doesn't want to even have this conversation because of the previous conversations that have been had, that's fine, too. This is, this is your decision. We had the conversation at the last meeting with these kind of draft action items. And I don't think anyone expressed any concern with it being included, which is why it was kept in as a recommended action. But again, today is kind of the day that you can decide ultimately if we want to have pieces included or not. So whatever, whatever you guys want to do on that. On the, on the comp study, I would respond to Supervisor Starkey by saying that you don't know what the outcome of the process is until you start. And so I think in people's minds, there's maybe an impression of the situation. But until you do the work of doing the comp study, it would be a predetermined outcome to say, we need to, we need to do X, Y, and Z, because we're going to be doing a comp study. You need to do the comp study first. So I hope, I hope that makes sense. The lands inventory within the housing element, I don't recall the specifics, and maybe Heidi does. But whether there was county property included specifically in the context of providing housing, I know that when I put it together 10 or so years ago, I don't think that we did. And if we did, I think the properties were primarily in the city. So I think they would have been kind of outside the scope of the housing element. I don't see any harm in doing this work, under the, under the county-owned lands, doing a lands inventory and trying to figure out whether it could be suitable for, for the development of housing. I don't see the harm in it. But again, it's one of those things, when you actually start to do the work, you'll have a better understanding of what the situation actually is. I think you at least need to have to do the work first. On the comprehensive capital improvement plan, this, it's kind of the industry standard. All, I mean, you can, you can do a, you just went to the, to the CSAT conference. If you were to have conversations with board members, or county administrators, or public works directors, I would speculate, in the vast majority of any of the counties you would have had a conversation with about how they do their, their capital improvement planning, it would look very different than the way that we do it. The way that we do it is very fragmented and very siloed, and it isn't holistic or comprehensive. So through the conversations that we had in putting this action forward, the idea would be to kind of adopt the modern industry standard for having a holistic impression where a plan is presented to the board, that includes all the pieces. It isn't just the carpet in the Flynn building. It would be the county's parks, the county's roads, the county's infrastructure, and putting a plan together that reflects, again, that kind of comprehensive need for maintaining our infrastructure and improving our facilities. So hopefully that answers that question, gives you a little better sense of kind of the direction that we're wanting to explore. And again, all of these actions, just to reiterate, aren't, you know, this is the board approving that this is going to be the way that we're do, we're going to do it. What we're requesting is direction to do analysis of the, of the different alternatives that could exist, come back to the board, and have the board make a direction on what they want to ultimately do. This is just initiating the work. County property cleanup, I would say the same thing. We don't know. There was a funding opportunity that came through from the state, the last two or three years, called Clean California. And millions and millions of dollars were appropriated to cities and counties, special districts, up and down the state, for cleaning up a public property. And we weren't in a position to take advantage of that opportunity, because we have a plan or a program. And so this item would be putting that plan and our program together.
I just wanted to clarify something, though, because I feel that both you and Chair Wilson sort of explained something not the way I intended it. I know exactly why they're on the strategic plan. I would have liked to have had an update where we're at with those particular items prior to this. Because we're a lot farther along than zero progress. We've already identified that the changes that need to be made within the jail. So that's what I'm saying. I would have liked to have had an update on the projects that are currently pending prior to this coming out, because I think we already partially the way through with some of it. So it wasn't that I didn't understand that the progress and that needed to be on here. I would have liked an update on those particular items prior to today. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Sure, yeah, that's fair. Why, do I need to continue down the list, or?
I, just a little comment about the capital improvement process. I just wanted to clarify my position, is that it's, it seems like you're saying with the comprehensive CIP, that the, the budget team concept, that group would bring priorities to the board. And I just wanted to make my position clear, that I think one or two board members should be into that process of determining those priorities before, before it comes to the full board for decision.
I think through the technical advisory committee, like you suggested, that makes a ton of sense.
Okay.
And I, and I know, I'm already on the capital improvements committee, so, I mean, we have some committees all set up for these things. I'm, I mean, so I sit on one of those committees.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll, entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
We have a second?
I'll second it, just so we can get to public comment and back to discussion with the board.
Yes. Any public comment on this item issue?
Good morning. Norma Williams, Chapter President, Delnart County Employees Association, SEIU 10 to 1. I hope you bear with me. I'm suffering from a little bit of jet lag, so bear with me right now, please. In terms of animal control, again, looking at this, I guess it's going to depend on what you consider feasible. Just want you to keep in mind that we do represent the employees at Animal Control, and that the union will be open to any discussion on any impact relating to what you find out. Wow. Perks and incentives for recruitment and retention. Welcome to the land of Flynn, everyone. Your plans for those perks and incentives? Well, let me tell you this. I don't know how many houses have to fall on you to have you realize that we're already underpaid. In terms of your ideas for employee discounts, like a database, awards, whatever, that's nice. That's very nice. But any amount of discounts or awards or anything like that, they're well-intended and well-meaning. Won't diaper an employee's baby. Won't pay an employee's grocery bill. Won't pay to put gas in their car. Won't pay their rent, mortgage, or utilities, or even oftentimes their out-of-state medical bills. And trust me, employees do go out of state, oftentimes to Grants Pass, up into Brookings area, even up as far as Medford for medical care. What concerns me is that county employees will be asked to follow a yellow brick road, where they hope to find a wizard that will grant them their wishes, only except to find that there is no wizard or man behind the curtain. County employees have the knowledge, the heart, and the courage to come to work every single day to provide the services this community serves and is expected to receive. All county employees want is that when they click their heels to go home, that they can go home with better wages, better benefits, and a work environment where there are no isms. Where they can work in a place where every single employee has an equal opportunity to grow, thrive, and advance. Let me repeat, an equal opportunity, everyone, to grow, thrive, and advance. The first two can be negotiated. The last one, the union is willing to discuss with your county team. But I think the one thing right now is that you can't guarantee that this plan will actually be carried on by future boards. That you can't, you cannot guarantee. So until then, we'll, we'll wait and we'll see. And until then, we'll see your team at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Say none, bring it back to the board for comment and vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a subsequent motion to accept the capital improvement plan, with the exception of item CSC-4B, which is the short-term rental ordinance. We beat this up for a long time last year, or maybe a little longer, and I don't see a reason to go through that again. So that is my motion.
We have a motion?
I just want to just counter Supervisor Short, that while this isn't going to for sure make an ordinance, but even, you know, our frequent flyer, Dave Powell, who's a real estate agent, he's not here today, but he said that he would like to see some changes in the way that we do short-term rentals. So I think it's worth the discussion. I think it's worth having it on there. We don't have to adopt it. I know we, we've had discussions, but perhaps there's another way to look at it. So I'd like to keep it included, and with the hopes that we then can have the discussion, and then the public can come and talk about it, and help us form what those ordinance could look like. So I'd like to keep it in.
Is there a second? Having no second. Chris, you had something to say?
Unfortunately, I, and I'd let county council figure this out. I, I mean, I'd love to be able to second Darren's motion, but it involves something that directly impacts me, so I don't think I could second him. But the points that Darren brought forward, he's 100% correct. I mean, this board did not have a willingness essentially to move forward with it, yet it finds its way onto a strategic plan. And it puzzled me, and I brought the same issue to Mr. Hooper here. But anyways, I'm glad Darren brought it up, because it did confuse him also.
We had, we had a hearing in the five, and the public showed us, that's what they talked about.
I will second Darren's motion for this, for this, to go forward absent the, the housing unit part. So let's take a...
Yeah, I, thank you. I, I just wanted to get back to the points raised and the speed. I know I brought up the concerns, and I really appreciate Mr. Hooper's time to spend with me on Friday last week, and doing a deep dive and his thoughts on how this would roll forward. More importantly, I appreciate us as a board, at least in my last nine and a half years, getting to the point where we could really start setting priorities for us, moving forward in the future. I, I think this is long overdue, and more importantly, extremely supportive of the process. And more importantly, I'm extremely supportive of the time and energy that staff will be putting into this. It's going to be a lot of work, but appreciate the heavy lift, no matter what direction goes today.
So, yep.
And I'd just like to throw out, just, I mean, just because the ordinance is there, or the discussion of an ordinance, that doesn't necessarily mean it's against, right? I mean, it's the discussion, it's a policy coming forward of what our official stance as a county is. So having the discussion and putting it out there, and finally putting it to rest of where we stand on vacation rentals, I think is a good thing to have in there.
I just read it as creating the ordinance, and like to say, we've already discussed that, so...
Do we currently have an ordinance?
No.
Do we have a stance? Do we have a direction? Do we have a policy that people must follow? Do we have anything in place?
We had something in place that said that short-term rentals will have adequate septic systems. That's as far as we wanted to go, after long, lengthy discussions.
Any further discussion? Say none, we'll pull the vote on the last initiative.
So I'm going to pull the vote for the motion that Supervisor Short made first.
Yes.
And Supervisor Starkey?
No.
Supervisor Howard?
I don't know how to even move forward with this. This is puzzling as hell to me. I'd have to abstain from this particular motion, unfortunately.
I believe that to be correct, but that's not up to me to say.
Supervisor Borges?
No.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Wilson?
Yes. Tied it up, so let's go to the vote for the first.
And this is just approving the strategic plan as is?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
No.
Supervisor Wilson? Or, excuse me, Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Abstain.
Chair Wilson?
Yes.
Council, can you clarify? Can he second, even though he abstained?
Yeah.
Yes?
Because I motioned to have further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
To get us on with the meeting.
All right, thank you.
So yes, I can abstain.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you all. And that will move us to the 11 o'clock timed item Frontier Project within Delnart County presentation by Douglas McAllister.
Welcome to Delnart.
It's good to be here. It's hard to get here, but it's good to be here.
You would know.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Board, appreciate your, your time today. For a little bit of background, I sat on your side of the days for about 13 years. And so I understand exactly what you're dealing with at this point. And so my purpose for today is to be as brief as possible. My deck is, I try to keep that about five minutes or so. And then, I have been up in front of different boards and councils for five minutes, and sometimes for an hour. It depends on the questions, if any, there. And so I'm, I'm kind of going to rush through this a bit, and then take your questions if you have any as well. And I don't know, am I controlling this, this deck, or is...
Rolling, rolling on the mouse.
Right here? So I hit something. Okay, it works. Okay, great. Basically, this is just a summary of what, what this is about. Frontier Communications, I'm vice president of the company, and we are in the midst of a massive fiber optic upgrade all over the country. And this includes your county. And the purpose of here, I've already met here with Neil. Neil, I had a discussion some time ago, and was invited to come back and kind of give you an update. There is, the update is ostensibly about our build. However, the primary reason I am here is to introduce myself to you. I am the senior executive connection to you for Frontier Communications. It's a new position. They recruited me about two years ago. And the purpose for that position is to create the, well, to give you cover. This is the best way to help. One thing's when I was in office, I was Mayor of Marietta, south, Southern California. And I would, I'd walk into the church, I'd walk into the store, I'd walk into any place that I get land blasted by a constituent. I'm sure that never happens to you. Happened to me all the time. And what I hated was, in that process, was to be, have to tell them, I have no idea what you're talking about. And then when I get hold of my city manager, and say, okay, where'd we find out the information? And the next thing was, I hate it even worse, was I have no clue. We have no connections with that utility, whoever it was. I didn't have cover. And so I had to deal with it and stuff. And so many times, I was in trouble for things I didn't do. And I'm sure that, once again, never happens for you, but for me, it did. And so I'm very, very sensitive to that reality for those of you I work with all over the state. And so while we're going to talk a little bit about the build, the primary thing here is, is that I, if it rises to your level of attention, anything happens with Frontier, and we'll talk about that build in a second, don't even take the second breath. I am the red phone. Okay? Staff is going to be talking to my team and such. And ideally, that will go very smoothly. So far it has, it's been great. But should something, you walk into a store, somebody asks you a question, you don't have the answer, I am the red, you call me. You'll have, Neil has my information and stuff, we can make sure that's assimilated to you. We do ask that you don't put my number on the website. I would appreciate that. But, but just for you, I'm, I am your representation. And so if you have any questions about anything that's going on, I'm here to give you that cover, so you make sure you can get back to your constituents and perform like I know you want to. So I've said all that, I'll skip this slide to move on. This slide is something I said, not Frontier. It says, if we're going to do something bigger than we ever have, then we better do business better than we ever have. Frontier has had to learn some lessons over the years. And one of the things that they knew they had to do, if they were going to accomplish this massive build for fiber optic, was that they were going to have to do business differently. And that's when they came and found me. And so the purpose, and I, and to their credit, you know, it's, I get it, it's like this big cargo ship, and you're trying to turn it with an oar, but it's a start. And the whole idea behind that is to make sure that we have a cohesive, cohesive collaborative relationship with the jurisdictions within which we work, which they've never had before. Community upgrade, we're going to be doing, I'm going to talk about the exact amount, what can they be doing here in a second here. But right now, I will say, with permits and construction, I'm pointing to the screens you're not seeing, permits and construction, and then after construction, those are the areas many times where we have issues. And sometimes if the contractors not, not playing nice, or whatever, and, and such. But what I have been told by my team, Neil, is that your team has been excellent, excellent with working with us and such. So the permits are flowing, and so, and there's quite a few of them, I believe. So that, that is, that speaks well for economic development messaging. But then after construction, making sure we clean up and everything else. But through the process... the process of both, that you may be pinged by constituents. And once again, don't even take the second breath, you make sure I get contacted, I will absolutely take care of it. If you try to go through the normal means, it may take weeks. I can take care of it with sometimes same day. Three, three things about, I'm not going to the whole thing here, but three things. The first thing, it's 100% fiber optic constructions, it's directly to the home. This is not something where it's fiber partway and then it's copper the rest of the way. We have massive speeds that we are providing both up and down. And, and so to do that, it's fiber all the way to the home, and I'll, I'll give you a path for that in a second. It's a stronger connection, more devices. I read a study some time ago that said the average home has 22 devices. I didn't believe it. And so I, I would decided I'm going to, I'm going to test and looked at my own house, and it's me, it's my wife, and my cat. The three of us have 13 devices, that last count. And all of them go in mostly at the same time. I have three computers on my desk, and they're all going at the same time, and I'm only at our 500, over 500 speed. And it never buffers, it never, when I'm doing my video chat and my video calls and meetings and such, it never, ever buffers. It always is smooth. You don't, contrary to the DSL and the copper where it will then choke, and the more people who are on there, the slower the speeds are. You might have a gig down, but you've got two meg up or something like that. Fiber optic is up and down speeds of 500, all the way we talked about here. This is a second up to five gigs.
You are the vice president of the company. I would think if you had buffering going on in your household...
No buffering whatsoever.
Then that would be a problem. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, yeah. I, we actually have, this is, this is going to cut into my five minutes here, but I will share a quick story. One of my, one of my guys, who's our chief engineer, his, he wouldn't spring for a better router. And so he works out of his home, and so, but the router is at the far end of his home, and he's got Frontier. But it was at the router was the problem. So when he's, we're doing the video calls, he was buffering. And it was like, come on, man, you're, we're talking to people about how this never happens. Anyway, that's another story. This moves on to the third point here, accessed up to five gigs. This is five gigs up and down. This is to your home. When I was first in office, spec, this would be 2004, this is when Verizon came to me and wanted Murrieta to be one of the first cities in the country to have this new thing called FiOS. And at that point, it was really fast. It was 50 meg up and down. And the, I, I just said yes, because I was trying to figure that any way that was free, we weren't going to have to build it, they built it, and things like that. What it did for Murrieta, just at that level, was we went from a bedroom community to a biotech community, because we had a broad bed and backbone. So economic development thing, which was my thing on the, on the council, was greatly enhanced because we had that access. Now you're up to five gigs and such. So we literally have people moving out of the Bay Area to places where they can work from their home because they have better internet, and they don't have to live and pay for the million dollar apartment. Now they can take that and move out. So it's a great way to, I would encourage you folks to, as we're building this out, to really promote this, because it's economic development driven. Next. This is just a description from the wire center to the side of the house. It kind of the steps to it, goes to a hub, and then that's outside of the community. We don't want those in front of somebody's house. And then the, the third slide, picture there is the, is the, is the terminal that's out, it's usually at ground level in front of the house, usually the sidewalk or the ground. So you don't see it, and that's from there, when they make the order, we don't do this until, it's called a drop, when they order the service, then we then go from the terminal to the side of the house and into a box there that translates it into whatever they have in their home. But because it's fiber all the way, there's all kinds of benefits to that, but most of which is, it's super fast. This is something that's important. I just have this slide here to talk about communication. We, we're very focused on letting people know when we're coming. Now, contractors every now and then take a shortcut and don't do that. I need to hear about that yesterday. So I could, I fired contractors when I find that this isn't happening. We want them to put the door hangers out, put the, put the signs out, there's letters that go out. We don't want it to be a surprise, but I guarantee you, it will be a surprise to somebody. I am one of those that when I drive in at my house, I literally drive in the house, I go in the garage and I come in that way. I don't know, anybody else does that. I never go to the front door except for two reasons. One is, is Amazon. Have to get there, my wife likes Amazon. And the second reason is to harvest the door hangers there, of which I do not look at. I just take them and throw them. So effectively, if someone in your, in your districts goes and harvests door hangers, does look at them, as far as I'm concerned, they were not notified. And they might call you, might call your staff. If they do, let me know as soon as possible. I'll send somebody out to make sure they're, explains why they see somebody out in front of their house doing what they're doing here. And so we're just very, very focused on not surprising your constituents when we're there. This map here is, generally, it just shows kind of the phasing, not so much the phasing, but the areas of your county where we're going to be and kind of the notes there about how, how big it's going to be. The bottom line here is, is we're getting, right now, the first phase of this is about 4,000 homes, three or four thousand, 3,000? It says there somewhere, I can't read it. But in about, about 700, 800 of those are in the actual city of Creston City, the rest of them are in your districts. And, and then, and then that's for 2024. And then after that, about another thousand homes. But most of this build, if, I think 95% of it, if not more, is either aerial or it's an existing conduit. There's very little actual digging that goes this, which makes it very, you know, you have traffic control plans and things like that. It's a whole lot simpler, less disruption at that point, as far as your constituents are concerned and such. But the idea here is that we, you know, we're the phone company, we're the ILEC, and basically by the time we're done, ideally next year, with the second, with that space of 1,000, is that any place that we have phone, we provide phone service, that we are also now offering the fiber optic for those folks as well. I only have this here not to be a commercial, but to explain, you're going to see the prices. These are the, basically, the, this does not include the deals. The deals are always out there. So I always told them to give me a slide that shows the, the most expensive it could be. And basically, why these prices are so low, I mean, you've got a gig for 80 bucks and typically get it cheaper, is we have divorced ourselves from, from the video content, meaning we don't try to package in with all of this, the 6,000 channels of which you watch six. It's, we're providing massive, massively huge pipelines of internet connectivity that's super, super fast, then you stream what you want. And I know for me, I went from like over $200 a month to under 100, and I see everything I want to see that way, super fast. And so that's why when your, and your constituents are looking to this thing, it's, it's, it's because we, they can stream separately, but they'll have a pipeline to do it. And, okay, I'm done. That's the question there. So I went through that very fast. If there's any questions, I stand here ready for that, and I appreciate the time to give, give those answers. Any questions from members of the board?
I have one quick question, if I could. Sorry, Supervisor Short. Is Frontier advocating for the Affordable Connectivity Program?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we, we have been very involved with that. And then when I found out it was, it was going away, my first question was why and such. We have a program that is a replacement one going on. It's not as good. It's the, but it's something that we have, we put in place of it. And, and then from that, it's, it's a placeholder until we fix it, get this thing going again. But yeah, absolutely advocating for that. It is a huge issue, and, well, overall, entire network, it's a huge issue, so yes.
Yeah, it's a huge issue for our senior citizens who are on a fixed income, for rural communities where we're, you know, 50% in the poverty level. So I'm happy to hear that Frontier will be advocating for that.
Yeah. At the end of the day, it's, it's, it's a source of customers. And so, you know, there's an altruistic side of this that's real, is actually authentic. But even for those folks who don't care about that side of things, it's, it's, it's a business. And so we're a for-profit business, so any way we can get customers, we're going to do that. But so absolutely, absolutely fighting for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McAllister, for being here. I just had a quick question. On your map of affected areas, there was, yeah, it's, it's gone. But I just noted that the airport was excluded and so was the harbor. And I didn't know, is that because?
I should have explained.
Or?
Yeah, I should have explained. This, this build I'm talking about is what we call FTTH, Fiber to the Home.
Okay.
And so this is all the residential areas. And if it's an HOA, we have to have separate agreements and, you know, things like that. But if it's, it's just basically residential. However, there is the business side, and I should have explained this earlier, I went too fast. You're going to come across businesses that are going to say to you, why can't I get this, or how can I get this? Or unfortunately, I've been trying to get this and I can't get through. Can't get anybody to call me back and stuff. Once again, not even the second breath. You can ring to me, I'll make sure they're, they're in contact. We have our inter-business enterprise side of the business that will get, get in contact with them, because it's a different process at this point. We're not, we only go to the businesses when they ask us to. And, and so absolutely, so it could be the airport, it could be any place, but that's a different process. But yet, I am still involved with that, so call me.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead. Will this increase the local workforce? Is there going to be any new positions being brought on to maintain this?
I would imagine, yes. I mean, I mean, I'm not kidding about it, it's hard to get here. Both times I've been here, it was, it was an experience. Even this time, they had the, what was it, 199? Yeah, so we had done with that on the way here this morning. And so I would imagine that we'll, it'll be hiring, the contractors, we'll be hiring people from here as much as possible. There are some things that, you know, it needs some skill to have to do, but if, I would imagine, yes. However, I can't give you specifics because I don't know. It just makes businesses to hire local.
Sure. And then the big pole replacement project going on right now in Lake Earl, I assume is for this, correct?
I can't definitely say yes or no. I do know the poles are being replaced, we are at least...
It's Horizon.
So that's not for the fiber lines?
If we're, we're typically joint owners of these poles, and so normally, it's going to be the electric company doing these things. And then we are, we have a section that we jointly own, that that's where you'll see the lower lines are us. And so we obviously have to be involved. But if it's whoever owns the pole, then we become a joint owner too. They're the ones replacing the poles. And if we're on them, we're involved, yes. I just don't know which ones we're on.
I'd heard that it was for the fiber line is why we were doing all of these pole replacements. But I guess I just wanted to clarify, and I didn't see any signage out there saying fiber's coming or anything, so I didn't know if that was...
That kind of surprises me. But no, that's, it very well could be and such, and I can find out and let you know. But at the end of the day, it's, if the poles are being placed, or ideally replaced, we have to be involved, because we have things on those poles. And so there's the transition period. Whether or not we are, we're the instigators of that, I don't know the answer to that.
Gotcha, okay.
Can I ask one more question, Chair?
Yes.
Is, is this related to the last mile? Is, is this the contract for that last mile?
Not this build, because this bill primarily is, you know, it's, it's privately funded.
Okay.
It's a profit company, and so the stockholders don't like us to lose money. Go figure. But the, we are very heavily involved with the grant process, with all the federal money, the state money that's involved with this. And so, and typically, it makes a lot of sense that if there is a middle mile or a last mile situation going on, and we're already building and such, then we coordinate with the counties or the cities, or whoever is involved with these things, to then get the grants involved, so that now when the grants become involved, now the ROI makes sense, and we're able to do that. And so that process is a whole, we have a whole team that handles that. And I believe they're probably already involved with you, but I'll find out to make sure that they are, because I would expect there's quite a few areas where there's middle or last mile issues we have to deal with.
Sure.
I want to thank you for coming and giving your presentation. I know that it is, it's critical for Delnor County. It is important for economic development to have robust, redundant systems in place that, that provide the necessary and adequate, as we saw during our power failures, is, is that, you know, it was the systems that, that collapsed and failed us over, whether it was wireless or other systems, once you passed a certain period of time. And so even, even, you know, cell phone service and other things went away and failed us at that time. So to have these hard lines coming in and being able to provide that service to the home is, is, is going to be a huge benefit, and I appreciate it. And on that point, Mr. Chair, what are the differences between the fiber and the copper? Copper gets wet, it quits working, among other things. In fiber, that's not an issue whatsoever, and there's no power needed. Once, once, that picture I show from the central office to the side of the house, all the power is at the central office. There's no need for any power in between. And so the power can go out, and our generators kick in, and we still have phone service, we still have internet and everything else for that. So to your point, you're actually right. And then the other thing is, are these coming over, over the same power lines, segments that provide power to Delnor County, or is that... Wherever there's a pole, yeah, we're on those poles, but we're the lower, lower cable. I'm not talking about the, 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 yeah, the, the large cable lines that, that provide direct power, that, the ones that we had to shut down for Delnor County. Is that the resource that brings Frontier into Delnor County? Well, the pole, well, I may have misunderstood. Towers, these are actual towers, but... Yeah. On those towers, I don't know that we're on the big, like the lattice work towers you're talking about. I don't know that we're on, I mean, the power probably comes into our central office like anybody else has the power. If that happens to go down or gets shut down, we're still okay, because we have our generators, and we keep those going, so we can continue to provide the phone service over. But it's, but the fiber itself, typically it's going to be on those wooden poles that you're going to see along the way. And short of somebody cutting that, or whatever... Or running down. Yeah. Or somebody, what we find a lot, thinking it's copper, so they steal it. We run into that sometimes. We're kind of like, neener, 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 you know, they went to all that trouble and they got fiber. They'll get the copper. But short of something like that, it's, it's resilient. That's one of the beauties of this, is that it just keeps working, just keeps working. But no, I don't believe we're on the lattice work towers. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Do we have to have public comment on our presentation? Yeah. Is there any public comment on the Frontier presentation? Seeing none, we'll move on to our visitor bureau update and recognize Cindy Vosberg, pleasantly. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for allowing us a few minutes, Chair and Supervisors. So we have some handouts. Due to time restrictions, we're not going to be going through the presentation page by page, but we did bring you each a hard copy that you can refer to and study at length, and let us know with any questions. And we have a copy for Neil as well. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Lynette Braylord with Lulish Design. She's our agency of record. And I think that you'll see that despite a very challenging year with our fire and our road closures and the fishing closure, that we were still able to stay on track with the marketing and keep bringing people here to Delnor County. So thank you. Lynette?
Hello, thank you. It's nice to see you all again. So we're going to launch with a video before we get into the presentation first. And just to preface this, this is from Visit California. It's currently airing, and let's roll. So I don't know if you guys caught it there, but...
When your hotel room is your bedroom, and you're living...
Oops, I can turn it off now. And then, is my, perfect. So we, that TV spot just launched at Visit California. They launched it at Outlook Forum, which is their annual tourism summit that I was present for, and it features UROC countries, redwood canoe tours, which is huge. And this campaign is a $33 million domestic and international campaign that they are running, and will receive, they're doing podcast audio, programmatic digital with all of this, and it's going to receive 2.5 billion impressions. So we're really honored that Visit California chose them, and the UROC are a great partner with all the fun adventures that they offer. So let me start clicking. So, more Visit California features, which this is stuff we cannot buy. Visit California invited the whole north of ordinary region, which includes our county, Del Norte, Mendocino, Humboldt, and Lake County, to give a presentation to their entire team, as well as staff writers, bloggers, their media content company that writes, you know, responsible for Real Simple Magazine, Travel and Leisure Magazine, all of that. So we did a dynamic mixer to about 90 of their staff members and all these media folks, where we did an interactive round of bingo on 100 Reasons to Visit Delnor County. where we did an interactive round of bingo on 100 Reasons to Visit Delnort County, while serving local food and drink products from Delnort County, like Stella's Cheesecakes, Porta Pints, Seaquake, Rumiano Cheese, and Crescent Seafood Smoked Salmon. We also gave away a grand prize for a stay at the Redwood Hotel Casino. And this is just an example of one of our interactive bingo slides promoting the Alexander Family Farm, vintage trailer that you can stay in, and then one of our bingo cards, so. And then in addition, we get, we got some really incredible exclusive marketing opportunities with Visit California this year. And one of these was a programmatic digital ad campaign that ran, which they chose Delnort County photos to run in it, which we received over 3 million campaign impressions and 15,000 clicks to the North of Ordinary website. Also, what's really exciting that's happening this May, IPW, which is the largest international and domestic tourism media and trade company, trade, what do I want to say, trade show, is happening in Los Angeles, which Visit California is rolling out the red carpet for. And our North of Ordinary region, and specifically Delnort County, is being promoted in their Plaza Walk outside, as well as we are sponsors on day two of their lounge, which will be serving local food and beverages. We have interactive displays promoting our county, and then also, we provided story and press pitches. Also, this, Visit California sent out a dedicated email newsletter, which you see there, Delnort County's right at the top, in February to their list. Of more than 236,000 emails were delivered. So now going on to Earn Media, which Visit California is part of this, but we would just like to highlight, again, Earned Media is something you cannot purchase. We are pitching constantly, monthly. We are also planning press trips all the time. And so this year, and this last year, we have hosted five, five media. One of them is a travel writer who writes for a number of travel publications. He also owns a travel media company. We also hosted two influencers. One was an indigenous influencer, which was pretty incredible. And then also, we hosted a really renowned photographer from Germany. And then of this, this doesn't include many of our articles. We do invest in PR software to track the stories that come out about us. But we've had over 1.5 million unique monthly views on the PR that has been generated, and over 160 articles. And in your presentation packet, here's just a list of some of the published stories, along with links to a comprehensive report of additional stories that were published. This story, which was really cool, was Via Magazine AAA for California, went ahead and published a story focusing on our indigenous culture in the Talawood Dune State Park. They also mentioned the writer stayed at the Curly Redwood Lodge, ate at Good Harvest Cafe, went on a horseback riding tour with Crescent Trail rides. So that was great exposure to over 6 million households. And then here's an example, we pitch Visit California monthly, which then, if they include us in their master pitches, it goes out to their media connections. And thetravel.com has been running a ton of stories around Delnort County this year. And it's as a result of those pitches that we do. And pretty much, we resulted in 20 articles this year with our Visit California pitches, and these are just some of the businesses that were mentioned. So overall, our campaign, we have generated over 35 million campaign impressions in the last year. And this doesn't include all the exposure from our PR. So what do we do? We do digital ad campaigns, print and digital media buys, content and search marketing, search engine optimization, which is that free traffic that we're trying to get to our website, social media marketing, email marketing, public relations. We are also doing a new art mural map, highlighting all the art murals around Delnort County this year. Trade shows, and then of course, photo and video shoots, to keep up with all the content we have to churn out. And just to remind you, we are always measuring everything. And how we measure this, we have our key performance indicators, which is lodging tax and City of Crescent City sales tax collections, our website traffic and Google search impressions, social media impressions, engagement and clicks, paid campaign conversion tracking, which we track especially, we do track print, but we also track every single digital campaign. Lead generation, those are all our visitor guide requests, our email subscribes, and our visitor center traffic. And then also, we look at how much referral traffic we're sending back to all the local businesses on our website. And we have those numbers as well, which is thousands per month of leads. So Delnort County Room Tax Report. So ads of the end of fiscal year '23, '24 of quarter two, which ended in December 31st. We did have a 4% increase in room tax collections, which is wonderful, considering, like, reiterating what Cindy mentioned. It has been a very challenging year for us, with the fires, fishing closures, you name it. Crescent City Room Tax Report, they were, they had a 12% increase in the last, as of December 31st. So website visits, obviously, all of our marketing, we want to get them to our website. We are up 24% year over year, with over, just a little over 219,000. We're also up 23% in page views. And what's really exciting, organic search traffic, again, that free traffic, we are up 37% year over year. And we are tracking for fiscal year '23, '24, which we have several months left. We are already tracking 19% ahead of last year. And then our top site visitors, so their locations, where they're at when they visit our website, is Seattle, San Jose, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Sacramento, and Portland, which is exactly what we want to see. And I'm going to skip social media marketing. We had nearly 5 million impressions from our paid and organic campaigns, which was, we did grow our net followers 93% this year. And, and we also had engagements, is something we look at really closely, and we had plus 1% in engagements. And what's really cool is our, we have above-average click-through rates for people seeing our social media posts and clicking through. We have about double what the industry average is. So that means people are resonating with our content. And I'm going to skip. What's really exciting is we have just launched a direct flight campaign, where we're promoting, you know, the flight with Advanced Airlines from, direct from Oakland, and also the Los Angeles Basin. This was something, even before we knew a new airline was taking over, we were always trying to educate people that you can fly here, because we are very hard to get to, as the gentleman said in his last presentation. So we are doing a targeted digital campaign to the Bay Area, and then as well as the Los Angeles area. But then we are also promoting a contest, so we're also promoting to our drive markets as well. But where people can get, you know, they might have to fly into another airport to get a flight to Oakland or LA. We do have a 5,000 media buy that's dedicated to this promotion. So we're excited about that. And I'm going to just skip, these are just some of the advertising buys we've done over the last year. So I'm skipping over to our North of Ordinary Marketing Partnership, which, like I mentioned before, is the four counties of us that make up the North Coast region, as Visit California refers to us, but we call ourselves North of Ordinary. This investment of $11,000 per year gets us up to $150,000 in exposure. And this partnership, in addition to all the things I've listed here, included this year, we exhibited at the Bay Area Travel and Adventure Show, which had over 9,000 attendees come through. Our booth was very popular. We ran out of our giveaways. One of our giveaways, which was a redwood-scented candle, we ran out of that in the first day. So the North, one of our, one of our biggest initiatives with the North of Ordinary marketing campaign is win the ultimate road trip promotion. We have over $41,000 in a media buy for this. It's getting invested into a range of digital, but we're also targeting the USA Today Network. We're doing a ton of email marketing. We also ran a full-page print ad in USA Today Go Escape West Coast Magazine, which we'll be dropping here any moment. And then we're also doing rich digital ads with Portland Monthly and Seattle Met, which is a great market for Delnort County, since we're so close to Oregon and Seattle. And this was our booth at the Travel and Adventure Show this past March. We did collect over 1,000 leads. Our booth was insanely busy. And the attendees are very high-income. And what was interesting is, I still, people have no idea where we're at. So it's just, you know, the whole time educating people that we're up here. And I think that is it. I was going to leave time for questions. I know there's more in your packet, so.
Any questions on board?
You're welcome.
Well, just, I have some comments, and I know Supervisor Starkey's ready and willing to jump into this as our board rep, but let me steal some of her thunder and just say, Lynette, you're a rock star when it comes to this stuff, in my opinion, and I've followed this for quite some period of time. I am continually impressed by how the Visitors Bureau and the board continues to do more with less. And I think that is what we're seeing with this presentation today. There's very little money when it comes to trying to market us as a rural community and a destination, but you guys are just crushing it. And I'm, I'm even more happy to hear today that we're going to be involved with IWP. I know we're going to have some conversations here very soon with some of the folks that are being brought in by Japan from the US Embassy. I know Cindy and Valerie are both going to be participating in those conversations with the US Embassy representatives, are going to be at IWP with Japan, because as you know, the US Commercial Service has made a strong push on behalf of the US government and Japan to bring more Japanese tourism here to the United States, and particularly California. So this is going to be an incredible opportunity for us. And I'm glad, I'm really glad we're going to be sitting here rocking that piece of it. The, the other piece I wanted to make mention, and it's, it's really glad to see the numbers now, the real negative impacts from forest fire. To see the massive reduction in TOT now on paper from that hit during third quarter last year is just, it just smacks in the face of how we need to better manage our forests. I mean, it is something we could overcome. There's a lot of ways. I know Chair Wilson and I have discussed this quite a bit, how to deal with this, to better work with our Forest Service. But I wanted to point that out in the presentation, because I know you were moving forward very fast. But this is only one piece of economic development in our community, just one simple piece. And you guys, as I stated, are doing quite a bit to get that one piece on solid footing. And if you were to make an offer today to do more, I'd be fully supportive of trying to increase that budget to do more. Because when we started down this path in 2006, Sam Handelman, University of Oregon, developer of Bend, Oregon, and we know what that community looks like now, said we needed a minimum of 300,000 a year to do what we needed to do. We barely got close to it. I know you guys are working with a lot less, but there's so much more we could do. Don't be afraid to ask us in the future to be able to do more. But thank you for spending those dollars so wisely to have that return on investment, and it shows. It shows in those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He did steal my thunder. Because I did want to point out how carefully crafted those investments with partners are. And, you know, I do sit on the Visitor Bureau Board or Committee. And we painstakingly decide which ones to go to. But it's your guidance and your leadership that help us decide. The only thing I want to add to the work that you've done is that she's always looking for pitch ideas. So if you have a pitch idea, send it our way. We want to make sure that we keep her fresh with new material, because she pitches so many great stories that get picked up, that's clear. And I just want to say, it's a pleasure to serve on that board, because I get to witness your talent on a regular basis. So I appreciate the work that you're doing for Delnort County. I think that you do a remarkable job, and I am so glad I get to work alongside you.
Thank you, Valerie, and I would like to say that we appreciate your contributions and your ideas as well. One of the numbers today that showed a great increase, Lynette shared with me, was a number that you wanted to see increased, and she really focused, focused on it this year, and she got a 90% increase over prior year, and that was?
Followers, followers on Instagram and Facebook, because Valerie mentioned, she goes, I want to see more followers.
Any other comments?
I just had a question for Cindy later on, on a different subject. Later on, we're going to consider how to funnel money to the Film Commission. And we need to decide whether it gets funneled through the Visitors Bureau or straight to the Film Commission. I was just wondering your opinion on that, Cindy?
So, and I sent an email to Neil when I heard that question had come up, and went ahead and reached out to Neil. And in my opinion, if you're going to be doing that additional funding, it should go straight to the Film Commission. To have it come through the Visitor Bureau books and us just turn, it comes in, we deposit it, we turn around and we write a check to the Film Commission. Lynette then has to do some more tracking, because we track every penny we spend in the return on investment. And so to me, it just makes sense to send that 15,000 to Cassandra and the Film Commission. And we'll continue, our funding with them varies on the low end. Since 2007, it's gone from 7,000 all the way up to 13,000. And a lot of it depends on what we're trying to achieve with those dollars. You know, Lake County has doubled the budget. They're much smaller in numbers, as far as what they get, but they have doubled the ad-buy dollars to spend on marketing. And that's because they have different types of associations that can go into lodging and BID and other types of funding. So we really have to examine every dollar we're spending on what the return on investment is going to be, and that year, what we can focus on. And this year, we decreased the spending to the Film Commission for two reasons. One is, at that time, we weren't seeing as big a return on films and permits here in Delnort County, and some of the things that had been promised to us, such as increasing our photo library and whatnot. And secondly, we really wanted to create this mural map that we could use to drive more tourism here, and another niche market. And so what our spending will be, Lynette and I will be working on the budget come May and June, finalize it with the board. But what they're, what we will contribute to them will vary, somewhere between 7,000 and 13,000. So I'm thinking we'll probably stay around 10,000, but we will try to push them more. But it does help that you guys are giving them some extra funding.
So I wish you would stay around for that conversation. You're making the exact argument... You're making the exact argument of why I wanted it to remain in your camp. And I know I spoke to Mayor Enscore about this last week. He was firmly in place in keeping it in your house for the very reasons that you just mentioned. So the accountability piece is critical to me on this point, and if you could stick around for the conversation, I don't want to waste the time on this agenda right now.
You bet, whatever you need. And thank you all so much. We appreciate your support. You know, we get up each day, and we want to be successful, and we want to go home feeling good about what we do, and we do feel good about what we're doing for the Visitor Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you.
I appreciate the presentation. It was excellent, and the outreach that you have done has shown in direct numbers, and that's very helpful in making decisions up here. Look forward to the Economic Summit this weekend and all that.
Friday.
Friday, yeah, that, all that that brings. Also, the only thing that I have noticed, you know, tourist-ish, is the dramatic drop-off of bus, tour buses to our area after COVID, and that has not rebounded. That has not come back. And so some outreach to that niche tour providers, I think it would be very welcomed by a lot of our, a lot of our motels and hotels, because what we used to get, we're definitely not getting even back to that, to that area. The COVID impacts to group tourism was dramatic, and it has not rebounded here to Delmar County anymore.
So Chair Wilson, we heard from Visit California that the tour business is changing. COVID did change it, and it definitely changed it for the tours that come out of China, from the Asian markets. And so they're still looking at that and trying to see what can be done about it. We have gotten in the last, I would say, three months, at least four phone calls into the visitor center that I've had conversations with them that are tour operators, and we're sending them out the materials. So they are starting to look at it again. But last year at the Outlook Forum, the Visit California told us that COVID has changed the, not as many people are as anxious to get on a bus with 50 other people, and that that's part of the problem. So hopefully, you know, that will, I don't know the answer to that, other than we will continue to work the tour groups.
Yeah, I mean, I see the tour bus industry coming back in. See a lot more of them up and down our highways and our roadways. They're just not here. They're not stopping here. And I know that they have their own organization for tourism that's specific to the tour bus industry, and if we can outreach to them, that would be awesome.
Will do.
Thank you.
Anything else, Lynette?
I was just going to say, it's funny that you bring that up, because this week, in fact, over the next couple days, we had a group travel website reach out to us. They're going to do an interview and do a full article on us. So, yeah, so it's exciting. And then we did have, we helped, were they from France? It was like a big tour bus of a group from France that came, and we helped them plan their trip, because, you know, having a big bus and the places you can go, so.
Yeah, and what we saw, like I say, and what we've seen is, there was a dramatic increase in those that are pack-traveling motorcycles, doing their tours through our region. We've seen those stays increase. We've seen a lot of the sport bike tour vehicles and their entourages coming in and through our area, and so we're seeing that pick back up, but the tour buses themselves, they're just not here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So when is the conversation on the Film Commission and who the check goes to?
Unfortunately, it's the last item on our agenda today.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But the Chair, the Chair could do anything he wants.
I could be nice, and I could be sweet, and I could, I could, I could have this, yeah.
Unfortunately, he's got one more timed public item at 11:30.
I think that was it. Oh, we got one more? Okay. Review and discuss, at 11:30, which is way past, review and discuss Treasurer's Report and quarter ending March with, the Chair recognizes Barbara Lopez.
I'm happy to wait and let you do that item first.
I don't think we can.
No, no, you're a timed item. We can't really.
Okay, that's fine.
Brought you up.
Wish we could.
I'll be quick. This isn't as exciting as the other. All right. Well, the summit is.
Money's exciting.
I know, right? It will be exciting when you see what I am going to show you. All right, Barbara Lopez, Delmar County Treasurer, for my quarter-ending Treasurer's Report, March 31, '24. We closed out our portfolio this quarter with $141,141,979. I have about 33% of that in camp, which is about 47 million. My government agency bonds are at 47% of the portfolio. CDs are about 13 and 1/2% of the portfolio. LAF, super small, 1.69% of the portfolio, just given the rates of LAF. But everything's pretty standard. I don't want camp to go too much slower, so as things mature, I'll roll those into any new purchases, but I don't know how our spending's going to go this year, this upcoming year, so I'd like to leave more in camp if I can. Okay, so for, like I said earlier, camp is outperforming LAF by at least a percent and 1/2 still, so we'll just keep money sitting in there. I did have some good maturities, so I was able to get rid of some of those lower rates and reinvest in some of the higher rates that are offered right now. And I'm noticing CDs are a little bit lower, so I don't, we don't need a ton of CDs. I could only buy 240,000. So I've kind of been passing on those as I see them and just kind of building up to have enough money to buy agencies in bigger lots. So interest earnings, this is the good, this is a good part, 1.298 million in interest earnings this quarter, and I think we're going to see that continue. You know, this portfolio is a five-year portfolio, so a lot of those older purchases that I made that were, you know, quarter of a percent, half a percent, those are still going to sit on the books for another couple of years, but I still am going to be able to purchase some of those 5%, 4 and 1/2%, and we'll have, you know, good three to six years of earnings of that higher rate. So I feel like we're going to still have quite a bit, and I'm hoping people, when they're doing their budgets, they can see their fund balances increase. I know general fund is going to see a nice increase in their investments' interest, so hopefully that will help with anybody that is looking for some extra cash. So rates here, they're actually a little bit better than when I pulled this. Camp is at 5 and 1/2%. LAF, it's getting up there, 4.2%, which is pretty decent for LAF. Eventually, camp's going to bomb, and then I'll throw the money back into LAF. I don't anticipate that probably for another three years, but once I see that starting to change, I'm definitely going to take advantage of getting money back into LAF. Like I'd mentioned, the government agencies on our portfolio is earning 2.62%. That's super low compared to what I can get today, but again, I have stuff that's still sitting on the books at a half a percent, 2% for another year and a half or two years, so that'll creep up once those ones mature. But everything's pretty much stayed the same as far as CD rates and bullets and collables. I try not to buy collables too much, so that lower percentage there on the bullets, for example, five years, 4 and 1/2%, that's about a bullet rate. And then this is my investment activity for the quarter. We did have some mature, items mature. You could see that 0.9% maturity. I was so happy to get rid of that one, and I turned that into a, I think the one I bought was a 2,425% out of five-year bullet, so that's going to be awesome to have on the books. Everything that I, that matured, I felt pretty good that we were able to flip into something that's going to earn a lot more, and that's just the nature of the market right now, so we're going to enjoy it while it lasts. And then cash flow, pretty typical, January, February, always a little bit low. I think we had last year maybe some one-time monies coming in. Schools, you never know, they could have had a couple state apportements that are one-time things. But just typical cash flow with taxes coming in in March is always, you know, going to pick up, but nothing out of the ordinary, and I think this quarter was pretty good, and our interest for 1.3 million is really good. I was happy to see that when I added it all up. But that is my report for the quarter. If anyone has any questions.
The only question I have is, how was our return on our property taxes? Are there a lot in default, or are there?
No, our tax sale this year, that's, you know, they have to be five years in default, is super low, which is really good. Our power to sell is coming up here for July 1 is super low. When Kelly, my assistant, and I were doing the budget, we were able to really keep that budget down with kind of anticipating lower tax sales, which is really good, because there was a couple of years where we had 20, 30, some really nice things that were, we had to sell, so we're not seeing that at all. And we usually, at the end of the year, we're about 5% delinquency rating, which is pretty common statewide. So, yeah, I would say it's pretty normal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wondered, camp and LAF are, those are our liquid funds, right? Is that just the best two? That can't be the only two that we're allowed to invest in?
No, it's not that it's the best two. There's, Cal Trust has a liquid account as well, and I haven't really looked at it. Camp is obviously the best in the market right now, but I think the Cal Trust one is probably maybe like right at 5%. Because it's a liquid account, it's just a lot easier to have it in, you know, all that money in one account, and then I don't have to move money in and out of different ones, so I try not to, especially with those liquid accounts, try not to get too many going at once. But yeah, for right now, I mean, almost every treasurer's got most of their cash in camp.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
One, one more.
Oh, sorry.
And we could follow up on this later. I think I brought this up to you last year. CSAC Finance created a platform that essentially allows folks paying property tax?
Yes, Easy Smart Pay.
The Easy Smart Pay, exactly, to pay monthly, basically, so we don't have these big chunks hanging out there to pay. And I know it could potentially make things a lot easier for folks here in our community that are on fixed incomes to not have to think about that big lump sum saving for. Where are we at with that?
I have mixed feelings on it, and I think I've expressed those to you. I'm happy to let it go through the Board, and if we want to have a contract with them and just kind of see what, what the appetite is on the public. There are fees, right? So every time someone deposits money into an Easy Smart Pay account, they're going to have to pay a percentage, it's just like a credit card payment. So if they're willing to accept that fee, and it's not, I think it's around 3%, then yeah, it's definitely going to be easier for them, and then that money gets transferred to us, similar to like a mortgage impound account. So I just sort of feel bad for the public, you know, if they're trying to manage their budget, they do have some fees, and a couple of the individuals that I see on my conferences that are a part of Easy Smart Pay, I kind of, you know, give them a hard time. Get those lower, I know you can do it. So they're working on it. It's not really up to them. It's, you know, the credit card companies that charge the fees. But yeah, if there's an appetite for, I'm happy to get a proposal put together and put up before the Board, and you can take a look at it. And then if we get one, great. If we get 20, great, too. It's no extra work for me.
It just allows for an option?
It does, yes.
For the community, they don't have to use it, but they can if they want to.
Exactly.
So that option, I think, is critically important. I was just surprised when Alan Fernandez presented this to the Board here last week, how many counties were shifting to having this as an available tool in the toolbox. So anyways, we could follow up on that.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
And for the purpose of ease of, we're going to take up Item 30, discuss the direction of the County Minister, State Officer, Budget Officer in regards to the method of increasing contribution to the Humboldt Delmar Film Commission, and we'll be getting on the 2425 as requested by the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chair, can I start this off, since I think I was probably one of the only ones that was?
You're the one stirring it up.
Stirring it up at this point.
Go ahead and jump in.
And like I said previously, I did discuss this with Mayor Enscore. The way we, and this is something that I established when I was President of the Chamber of Commerce to ensure that there was some attention being paid to the Film Commission, right? And the budget traditionally has fluctuated, but it's fluctuated to have accountability with the dollars, the limited dollars that we had to invest from the Visitors Bureau. And so more pressure, great. My concern right now with that direct investment, it's, I'm all for the investment. I just don't know where the staff time's going to come for to do the job that you're already doing with whatever percentage you commit. It seems like we should have it continue to be in one house, so when you're making reports like today, or she comes up to here for us today, we understand where that money's going, and we understand that return on investment. Because I know when we did those pushes in particular, I recall some, some years where we were getting quite a bit of attention by commercials, Cadillac being one. We had a lot of that happening here, not necessarily big motion picture films, but we had a lot of big industries paying attention to us at the time, so. Love your feelings on that, because I know they differ, differ a little from Mayor Enscore's and potentially Supervisor Starky's.
So I would like to address your concerns. On the hand of us holding the Film Commission accountable for what return on investment we get back from them, that would put the ball back in our court, and we do that. And that's what we do as a, as a matter of business. We actually do it with every single vendor that we work with, and, and ourselves as well. You know, Lynette holds me accountable, I hold her accountable, the Board holds us both accountable. So in that regard, what I would like to share with you is this. To, to me, as your Executive Director of both the Chamber and the Visitor Bureau, it's not a big enough deal as far as whether we cut the check or you cut the check, to make a difference to me. It's just a matter of another, you know, piece of work that we do. What is important to me is that we do have a good return on investment and the accountability. And so that being said, if you guys want the Visitor Bureau to be stewards of it, I'm more than happy to do that. That's not a problem. It's not, I don't have a strong feeling why we shouldn't be. And so if it gives us a little bit more power to be able to get a little bit more out of the Film Commission, another permit or two filed here, another movie here, commercials, you know, the, you know, the filming that was done last year in Stout Grove for the big ball in Las Vegas was amazing, and gave a lot of business to Hayuchi Cafe, who catered it and whatnot. And even though they were only here a couple of days, those things bring a lot of money into the area. So, so base your decision on, not on what's easy for the Chamber, and I know you wouldn't do that anyway, but because we'll do whatever it is that you need us to do to get the best return. Any questions?
Well, yeah, Cindy, I think, I understand where Supervisor Howard is coming from in that control piece, kind of similar to what you mentioned here a little bit ago with your mural map project, and you used a little piece of that money that, that came in to, to do that. And I think Supervisor Howard's saying, that's exactly what I'm saying, is the Visitor Bureau needs control. But I'm wondering if, if your initial thoughts were because you have that tranche of the $10,000 to kind of play with? So is maybe that why you're saying, take that additional 15 and just send it straight to them? I already have this, control of this piece of money? I?
No, it was more just the workflow. You know, if you guys want to see 15,000 that's separate from the budget that you give to us, and that we, we sit down and try to get, you know, every ounce that we can out of it, that's not a problem for us to cut a check to the Film Commission for the 15,000. We could still cut a separate check for what our contribution is. And so I think what I hear Chris saying is he wants somebody that's going to hold them accountable for the 15,000. And, you know, does that mean that when we come before you and ask for increased funding? You know, I explained to Cassandra, and we work well together, by the way. We work, we play very nice with the Film Commission. It's, you know, we all play nice in the sandbox. But I told her at that time, I said, there's no guarantee what our funding is going to be from one year to the next from any of our funding partners. And so, you know, she should be facing that same thing, and she does. And so she's got Humboldt County that's very generous with them, and they get a lot of films in Humboldt County. And part of what we went across is we don't have the same resources here that Humboldt County has, and the film crew can come up from LA and save two hours off the travel time, have more lodging facilities, and redwoods. And so what do we have to offer? And that's what we want Cassandra and the Film Commission to do, is we want a better library, we want better pictures, better ideas, her being more familiar with Delmar County, so that she can, can offer up what Delmar County has to offer versus what Humboldt slash Delmar Counties have to offer. And that's our biggest challenge, is what makes us stand apart from Humboldt County? So.
Yeah, there's, there's just more than enough available lodging here in our off-seasons to handle that increased flow. I know you know that. It's just, how do we get those site location managers that we discussed with her up here? And there's been years that we've done really well at that, and I just think I have a lot of faith that the folks representing us on the Visitors Bureau are going to have that accountability piece, have those, more conversations than we are as a, as county staff, as county Board. have those more conversations than we are as a, as county staff, as county board, directly with her monthly to say, hey, where are we at with this?
Other than it makes her accountable to another government that she has to perform, I mean, 15,000 is a pretty good chunk. And so, if she's not performing and able to show the return, um, it makes her then accountable to the county and the Visitor Bureau. So, it does double the pressure on her.
She's already aware of that.
Well, that was going to be my exact point, is while Cassandra, she's wonderful to work with, but this is the money that we're giving directly to her. I don't think putting a third party in and telling her that she's not performing on our money, I think that needs to come directly from us. While I can appreciate what Supervisor Howard is saying, there's always a supervisor on that Visitor Bureau, but that's just one body. So, I think, like we do with Denaka, Denaka has to come before the board and show us exactly what it is, what we've invested. I think the Film Commission should have to do that as well. I'd like to see it separate, but again, um, if Cindy is agreeable to have it through the Visitor Bureau, I could support that as well. She's an amazing director, so, but I'm just, my only thing is that I'd like to see the, the Board of Supervisors, the county, she have to be accountable to this revenue source for herself, directly to us.
I think she should have to be accountable to the county. Yeah, I think she should have to be accountable to the Visitor Bureau, um, but also accountable to the county.
And she has been yearly. She's made presentations to us at the same time you do as for your budgetary piece. So, that's, that's gonna occur. I just, the, the monthly eyes on this thing is critical, and I don't see any one of us doing that.
Well, whatever you guys decide, we're good with you.
So, I just have a question with, um, would that mean we need to change the wording of the giving of the money? Because right now, the way we have it worded is, it's basically just a pass-through. We pay it to them, they write a check, and she has no real teeth of adjusting how much, either, you know, show us some results, or I'm cutting this funding. Right now, we're kind of just like, here, you, you give them the 15,000. Like, it's, there's no, you know, no backing behind it.
So, here's, we're already doing this, and the budget's fluctuated, as Cindy mentioned, annually, depending on how much room there is to play with. The 15,000 now forms a base for the Film Commission, and then Cindy could continue to fluctuate the amounts based on her, her buy for the upcoming fiscal year that she's budgeting for. So, there's still flexibility in her budget, but we set the base within that budget for the, for the Film Commission.
Any other questions?
So, I'd like to make one more comment. Just thought of this. So, on one hand, you know, um, I do like the idea of her being accountable to both the county and the VB for the funding. On the other hand, will this give the VB a little bit more power with her? Because it's a larger chunk. So, keep that in your consideration, because I think there's pros and cons to each side, and that it would give us more power. Either way, Cassandra's gonna try to, she's gonna have to be a little bit more accountable and, um, and more proactive with Del Norte County. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, I was gonna take my lead from the Chamber Director, but hearing what she had to say, I think that the direction is that we give the 15,000 that is earmarked directly toward the Del Norte Humboldt Film Commission to be through the Chamber, or through the Visitor Bureau, who then will distribute that, and then the Visitor Bureau will continue to decide the amount that they need to fund out of the other money that's been given. Is that clear as mud?
Is that a motion?
I, I thought it was just direction, but I can make a motion if you'd like.
I'd love to hear a motion.
It is my motion.
I'd second that.
Is there any comment for the public?
Yeah, hello. My name is Elias Mavris. I've, uh, I've lived at Point St. George in Del Norte County for over 40 years. Uh, you're talking about film festivals and visitors and all these wonderful things, and your big plan that you're gonna do at Point St. George, still to this day, nothing. It's a small county that we have here with an amazing, two beautiful, uh, lighthouses. Not to mention, uh, the historical building out of Point St. George is a Navy World War II decrypting station, that I've honored the ability to live in such a historical and amazing, uh, at one time, it was highly classified, uh, operation out there, and it's kind of a wonderful feeling to be there. Um, as far as Crescent City coming in and tourism, when you come in from Crescent City from the south, you're gonna see signs that say, uh, rape indigenous people, uh, missing children. Uh, some of these billboards that I see coming into Crescent City, I would just bypass it, not knowing the beauty and the, the community we have here. I would just bypass that. Uh, I've traveled the world in, in many places, and it's really disturbing coming into my town seeing that. And, uh, the non-mention of any of these things, and the problems at Point St. George, and my YouTube channel, PSG Surfer M at YouTube, uh, is unmentioned to this day by the county, by the newspapers, anyone, uh, that has any voice in Crescent City has not mentioned it, and this is causing a great strife in my family. There's confusion and doubt of what is happening and what is not happening out of Point St. George. So, this county should take very good care and, and very delicately try and fix these issues out of Point St. George. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a vote.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Wilson?
Yes.
Chair, if I could just thank Cindy Vosberg for the awesome recognition of the Hungarian bus tour that was here two weeks ago that sang in our beautiful redwoods, for getting that up on the Visitor Bureau website so quickly. That was incredible. I wish we could've capitalized on that a hell of a lot more.
With that, we're gonna take a five-minute break. As I saw all these people, as I saw these people going and leaving us and kept going using the... You were, yeah. All right, we're gonna come back into session, and we're gonna take up item number 20, is authorize and approve the creation of Human Resources Risk...
We pulled that item, Chair.
Oh, that's right, correct, sorry. Pulled that item. Sorry. And 21, approve and appoint a board member to represent the Board of Supervisors on the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, and replace the county administrative officer on, as the board's representative with the CAO's recommendation for the board appointment being Supervisor Starkey.
Move to approve.
Mr. Chairman, um, as I am in the habit of volunteering Supervisor Starkey for doing many things, I will second that motion.
We have a first and a second. Is there any public comment on the appointment? Seeing none, we'll take it back to the board for a vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Wilson?
Enthusiastic yes. We'll be bringing up the budget items, approve and adopt budget item number 404 for the amount of $31,172, uh, for the housing rehabilitation budget, uh, grant budget as a result of the fiscal year 2020, '21, '22, uh, program income review. Also, adopt and approve item number 0407 to the amount of $73,000 for the miscellaneous revenues and expenditures budget unit for the building maintenance and parks budget unit to allow for the purchase of new vehicle. Also, adopt and approve budget transfer 0408 to the amount of $73,000, again, for the miscellaneous revenues expenditures for our vehicle budget unit. And to approve and adopt, uh, budget transfer 0409 to the amount of $16,500 with the technology fund budget to replace server room air conditioners, as requested by the Director of Information Technology. Approve and adopt 0410 to the amount of $24,230 with the public nuisance budget to allow to repayment of illegal disposal sites, cleanup grants, funds to the California Department of Resource Recovery and Recycling. And approve and adopt 0411 to the amount of $1,250 for the building inspection budget to allow for the payment of a strong motion instrumentation and seismic hazard mapping fee for the Department of Conservation and request by the Community Development. Do we have any public comment on any of these budget items or questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question, um, for Neil and/or Alan, and that's the, the purchase of the vehicle. I was there in the room when you said, hey, I need a vehicle, and Neil said, the money's in the budget, now's the time. But how do we make that decision to purchase, uh, other than leasing from the enterprise contract? What, what drives our decisions, whether we purchase or lease?
Uh, there isn't really a decision, decision that drives one way or the other. Um, it's a preference usually of the department, and it depends on how fast they plan on turning the vehicle over. Uh, the, the lease option is something that's turned over a little bit quicker than a purchase. Typically, the building maintenance has had their vehicles for a number of years. They have low mileage, but they do use them pretty extensively, and so this just made a lot more sense from a towing perspective and getting this kind of vehicle, um, through a purchase.
Cool. All right. Yeah, and I appreciate Supervisor Short bringing this up. Obviously, I've been a strong advocate for looking at the leasing program more broadly through each of our departments, in particular Sheriff's Department. And I know we're gonna probably revisit this discussion again with Sheriff Scott, but I know, um, DHSS currently uses the program and has seen success. I mean, obviously, we've got a fleet vehicle out here that gets very little use. It sits in our parking lot, and then gets outdated, and then we put it up for auction, and it's already not worth anything. So, I don't see why we wouldn't, at least for, in particular, admin or any other department, be encouraging a second look at this. So, I do believe, and I appreciate Supervisor Short bringing this up, we re-look at this program again.
Yeah, definitely. We are actually looking at, looking at another administrative vehicle right now, because if the board recalls, a couple of years ago, we purchased one to share with the county council's office, and we're getting more and more use from other departments as well.
Yep.
As you know, admin has HR, risk management, recreation, veteran services, they have county council, and so we have too many people that are using one vehicle. Um, I do get, on a fairly regular basis, a list of vehicles they have available for sale through Enterprise, and the last list did not include anything that we could actually use, but I can reach out to them prior to reach, uh, purchasing another vehicle for admin, to see what they have available.
Yeah, and I just prefer staying on a lease.
Now, I, Neil did actually put me in touch with the, the lease folks. I did reach, they, I did reach out to them. Uh, we talked about it, but due to the specialization of the vehicle with the requirements of, we need it, we needed a, um, a maintenance bed and a lumber rack and this, they, they said that they just didn't have anything that was available to us, but we did, we did talk.
I, I know they have it available to the Sheriff's Department, and there's a lot of counties that utilize it, outfit the cars completely, and in three years, those cars are turned in. I, I'm surprised, I'm hearing from you, they couldn't outfit it with something as simple as a box.
Well, I, I, I did reach out. I gave them all of my specs, and they, they didn't come back.
They said no.
They, they just didn't come back.
Okay. Oh, they didn't come back?
Yeah, they didn't come back.
Okay. That makes more sense to me, because I, it's my understanding, those type of vehicles are available. I'm just looking for you to be able to upgrade every three years, and not have a problem with maintenance.
Since we're throwing out opinions on leasing, even though it's not the topic, I'll just put mine out there that I'm strongly against it, and I think we should just purchase them outright. That way, it's done. And so, like with this purchase, I strongly agree with it, and, uh, glad we're not signing up for payments on, so...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, budget transfer items four, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
I'd second.
Have a motion of second. Any public comment? Yes, see none. Okay, bring it back to the board for a vote.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes, sorry.
Chair Wilson?
Yes.
Somebody talking to me?
Wake up!
Read the next item.
That brings us to 28. Receive a copy of a letter provided by the state legislators from the Director of Health and Human Services per section 1.60 of the Administrative Manual requested by the Director of Health and Human Services.
I don't know if there's an action, but I, was this consensus that we received?
Did you want, did you need to speak to us on this?
I just want to say I appreciate your advocacy on this, because we are, you know, the budget is being purported that we're going to be very, very in the deficit, and so for you to take the initiative, to talk about the programs and the cuts that could potentially be made, and advocate strongly in opposition of them, I do appreciate you taking that time to do that.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you, yes. Our advocacy groups, you know, that I'm a part of, they really are, you know, asking the state, "Why are you trying to cut our most vulnerable population programs?" And so, I especially felt it was important to, you know, make our voice heard about, you know, we added specific local impacts to all of the letters that we've sent. So, thank you for your support in that.
I appreciate it, you know, we did hear about these cuts, and a lot of them haven't even been determined yet, but we know where they're looking, and it's definitely where the money is, and that's unfortunately sitting mostly in DHSS. So, I appreciate your advocacy in that, in this area going forward, you know, defending our positions. So, welcome back to the board. Is there any other public comment on this issue? Seeing none. entertain a motion?
No motion.
Oh, no?
Chair, there's no motion for this item needed.
Keep going. This is 29. Authorize and approve Chair to sign a letter, send a letter to the U.S. Department of Transportation and Maritime Administration supporting Crescent City Harbor District's request for a PIDI grant funding to rebuild the citizen dock as requested by Supervisor Starkey.
It's basically just a letter of support for them to rebuild citizen's dock for their grant application. They reached out to me, and I asked for it to be put on for the board for consideration.
I would move that we approve the Chair to authorize.
Move in a second. Any public comment? Seeing none. Pull the vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Wilson?
Yes.
We got everything.
I think we got everything.
What about 30?
We did that already. You had to move it up.
That was the Chamber of Commerce.
I, we quite, you know, we skip over this first piece, and CA Serena always used to bring these pieces into the discussion as just general for the heading, that's why we have it in there. And we just all got back from the legislative conference, and there's a lot of legislation that we need to be paying attention to. Obviously, Renell brought us some key information today on the pieces that she's advocating for down in Sacramento, but I brought up a couple today, ACA 1 and 13, that this board needs to be weighing in on here soon. I'd also encourage us, and you'll probably see from Sidney Act today at RCRC, even though we're not a Williamson Act county, AB 2528, it's a big deal for the state of California in dissolving agricultural lands for other uses. And so, I think even though we're not a Williamson Act county, we do need to weigh in on this. So I'd definitely consider it, since currently, for some reason, our Assembly members seems to be in favor of it. I'm not, I'd love just for us to maybe weigh on this a little at our next meeting and take an opinion. Along with some other pieces of legislation, so.
There's so much coming up, yeah.
Yeah, I find this to be an interesting point. Should we, when we find a piece of legislation that we would like to have a complete board discussion on and decide, should we be forwarding that as a request to be put on the agenda, or for staff to model something and bring it forward to us for the pros and cons?
I think it'd be great to have a direction from the board, or a request from the board that goes through the Chair to add it to the agenda, because as you know, there's tons of legislation out there. Our platform is pretty broad, and so for us to select certain items, it's nice to know what the board's interested in and actually watching to bring forward for discussion.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
And again, even though we, you already have a direction that if anything fits within already identified confines of the board's stance, that staff has the ability to bring that out and draft those letters, much like DHSS did today, so. But there is so much coming down the pipe, and there is so many issues for us, that even just to express our opposition and or support of, it is important. Having that said, this general session, this regular session is adjourned.